Thank you for coming in on a rainy night and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. With the flag is back there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead on to item three, which is approval of the agenda. Dr. Brenner, do you have any additions or corrections?
No additions.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Motion by Chris, second by Jeff. Any further questions or comments? See, a non-assuming roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes. First, we have the August 20th minutes. Do we have any?
Second.
We have a motion by Doug and a second by Cynthia. Any comments or questions about the August 20th meeting minutes? See, a non-assuming roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we have the August 23rd meeting minutes. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Doug, second by Chris. Any comments or questions about the August 23rd meeting minutes? See, a non-assuming roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five is citizen comments. We have a few cards here for citizen comments. Each person who wishes to speak can speak up to three minutes. I would encourage you, if previous speakers had said what you're going to say, that you can defer your time for that. And I apologize in advance because I will probably mispronounce some people's names. First one I have is Sally McKinnon. And the second one, just so they know, is Michael Coachman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to tell you, I don't know your names. I don't have children. I don't even have grandchildren. But I love children. And what I'm going to say is probably going to be real layman's terms, okay? I got to thinking about you people and I realized that you've been elected as leaders in this community. And I got to thinking the other day, what is a leader and what does he do? Number one, I think a leader has a platform, a plan, a belief. He thinks about this, he believes in it, then he speaks about it. He goes in public and he speaks about it, okay? The third thing he does, he acts on it. And he acts according to the belief that he supports, okay? In our society, I think you all have platforms and you have an agenda, particularly with the issue that we're dealing with, kids and mandate masks. All right? I think all of you here that are sitting here that are in favor of masks, you firmly believe, don't you, that they're good for kids? That they don't harm kids, they're good for kids and good for society, okay? And then, I can't even think. In any event, then you speak about it. You go out and you hold things like, you hold conferences like this, you speak about it on TV or on the radio in public. The only thing I'm thinking, how do you act on it? And if you believe in something so wholeheartedly, I think you should be act accordingly. And what I present to you is that if you expect children to wear masks for 6.58 hours a day with a 20 to 30 minute lunchtime and little kids ranging from five on up into high school.
Three, age of three.
Oh, three, yeah, okay. I thought you were going to say three minutes. Anyway, if you expect children to wear masks for that duration, and roughly, I think it's probably 270 days a year, I'm going to challenge every one of you here. I'm going to ask that each one of you take a mask next Monday. And for the next 30 days, you put that on your face and you wear it for seven hours a day with only a 20 to 30 minute lunch break. And I wonder how you'd react. And I want to say this, would you be afraid that it might harm your body in some way, that you wouldn't get enough oxygen, or that you'd be breathing in carbon dioxide and bacteria? Would you not want to wear it because it's inconvenient and it's uncomfortable? Would you not want to wear it because maybe somebody above you, around you, beneath you will come against you on it? You might have some reprisal. And would you act out of fear and not do it? How many of you are afraid to do any of those things that I mentioned? How many of you are afraid that you're going to do bodily harms to yourself if you wear masks? How many are afraid that somebody else is going to come at you if you don't wear, if you don't go and support this and push it? How many of you think it's going to be inconvenient and uncomfortable for you to wear a mask seven hours a day? Now, I would challenge every one of you, in fact, starting next Monday, I challenge you, put on a mask and wear that for seven hours a day consistently and wear it for 30 days straight. Not 270 days, but 30 days. And when you're wearing it, you think of the children, you know? And you think why you were elected. And you think of the platform that you stand on. If you think they are going to not harm children, then you ought to do that. You know, if you're not afraid of having it be inconvenient or uncomfortable, then you ought to do it. If you have no fear of somebody coming at you and maybe firing you or getting rid of you on this job, or any job, then you do it. And I thought, would hope that you do it on integrity. Maybe you need somebody follow you around every day for 30 days to make sure that you don't take those masks off. Because that's what they expect of the children. You ought to be leaders. You've got followers coming from the community and they include parents and children. You ought to be able to do what you claim is right for the kids. Would any of you do it? Can you raise your hands? Would any of you wear that mask for 30 days? Good for you, good for you, good for you. All right. And the next time you put that mask on or you talk about it, you think about the little children that have to wear it for 270 days a year, seven hours a day.
Please wrap up. Thank you. Thank you. Next is Michael Coachman, and then after that is Josh McSperren.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to share some thoughts with you. And this came across me not too long ago. And it still rings true today. And it's a little statement here that says, first, they came for our college students, and I did not speak out because I was not a college student. They came for our healthcare workers, and I did not speak out because I was not a healthcare worker. Then they came for the federal, state, and county workers, and I did not speak out because I was not a federal, state, or county worker. Then they came for my child and me, and there was no one left to speak for us. That last part is the key. No one would speak for us. I'm here today to speak for the ones who cannot speak, for the ones who are afraid, who are intimidated, who want to say something. But we have something on our adult level that we tell the kids not to do. And that is peer pressure. We use that and bullying. This is an adult-level bullying on other adults. Because you know that if they say something, they get pressure. And I know the odds are, mostly you are wearing your mask because you know what type of peer pressure you're going to get. How it's going to affect your job, how it's going to affect the people that you're around. And you do it out of fear. And the young lady that was just before me said the same thing, fear. Most of these kids are out of fear. And I'm letting you know right now, there's a serious problem with the kids with fear. I deal and work with a lot of kids. They're afraid. There's a lot of parents, when I went across the state with a rally and trying to get people motivated to get involved in things like this, fear is a big thing. And what you're doing now on the adult level is bullying, making somebody do something that they don't want to do. You know, when we look at our Declaration of Rights, we as individuals have that God-given right to be free. But you're saying, no, if you don't, you're going to be scrutinized, chastised, penalized, and just cast out. You're making them feel inferior. And we don't need that. If a person doesn't want to wear a mask, don't force them to do it. You don't know what type of trauma that they're going through? You don't know what these kids are going through? I work with kids from age 12 to 17. They already have enough going on in their life. They don't need this. They're afraid. You need to remove the fear. Kids need to see smiles. They need to see joy. And when you do this here, you cannot tell me if I'm happy or sad. And right now, those kids need sunshine, that light from a smile, someone who cares. Not a black mask, not a blue mask, not a red mask, but a smile. The most important thing that we have to communicate with is a smile. And when you take that away, you take away the hope of the kid. So I'm asking, and I'm standing up for each and every one here, even if you have a mask, I'm still speaking for you. It's not about just the kids. I'm speaking for you because I know some of you are afraid. You're intimidated. You need to stand up. I'm here with you. And there's a whole room full of people who want to stand with you. So it's your choice. A lot of us don't have masks. Join us and get rid of your fear. But I know you are going to have fear because you got to work within the state. But that's a choice that you have to make. Don't throw it upon these kids who can't stand up here when they're three, five, and seven, cannot argue and say, no, I don't want to wear this. Don't do this to the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McSperren, and then after Josh McSperren is Ilsa Day.
Hi. I'm here just for my son. He is healthy. There is nothing wrong with him, except he cannot breathe in a mask. He is being penalized. He can't do extracurricular activities because he can't breathe. So I have a little video. I hope this works so you can hear it.
Hello, my name is Hollister McSperren. This is my experience at wearing masks at GCCC. They're annoying, uncomfortable. It feels like I'm suffocating. They're hard to breathe in. You can barely sing because you can't open your mouth wide with them.
He's being penalized for being healthy and nothing wrong with him, except what you guys are forcing on him. He is losing out on opportunities for no reason whatsoever.
Thank you. Ilsa Day and then David Waterman?
What was that?
Ilsa Day and then David Waterman?
Is this on? Hang on, I got to bring it down here. Hi, I'm Ilyssa Day. I'm a mom of three. And my five-year-old just started at Kelly this year, and he's autistic. But this is not the first year that we've had to deal with this school system as far as the mask mandates go. And unfortunately, I'm on a different side of these things. I'm going to try to get through this without getting emotional because this is something that is very, very important for everyone to hear. So last year, my son started Head Start because some of these, some of these people here believe that this mask mandate starts at kindergarten. But no, the three- and four-year-olds last year wore masks all day long at the Head Start program. Three- and four-year-old babies. My son was there on an IEP because he has a speech delay and multiple other behavioral issues. He cannot tolerate things touching his face. We knew this would be an issue with the masks. So before we enrolled him, we got him a doctor's note saying that he could not wear it. We got the professional opinion of a behavioral specialist saying he could not wear it. But about a couple months in, one of the teachers, or the director actually, decided that she was going to do it anyways, against doctor's orders and against my wishes, without notifying me. Obviously, that didn't go well. And my son was not allowed to return to school for two weeks, while I had to go all the way up to Dr. Brenner here to finally get my son back in school with a face shield that he then spit on and threw at teachers and other classmates. And it became a projectile object because you just handed an autistic child something that you wanted them to strap to their face and tell them that do it or stay home. This is a child that was there for speech and for help with his behavior. Some of those behaviors include isolation. He isolates himself from other children. He does not understand other people's emotions. These are things that were in his education plan that these teachers were supposed to be helping with. But instead, this year, another mask mandate came out. And I had to go to my son's school and have a meeting on how to best isolate him from the large majority of his class because he could infect them with something that he does not have. Obviously, this is very upsetting. But luckily, he has great teachers at Kelly who have managed to include him in the classroom with his specifications on his IEP. But that's only because I had to fight and fight and fight to get to that point. And I have heard countless stories from other moms who have pulled their children from school, have not enrolled them in kindergarten, are not seeking therapy for children that need speech and other therapies because they know that their children will not be able to tolerate the mask. And they either don't have the time to take off work to fight this, or they don't have the money to take their child to specialists and have them diagnosed. Oh, I forgot to mention, my son did not have a formal autism diagnosis when he first started Head Start. I was told that I needed to go have my son diagnosed because if it said autism on his IEP, they would be more willing to make exceptions for him. So my child had to go to a behavioral specialist to get a formal autism diagnosis because I, as a parent, wanted to get him help with the speech and the problems he was having. And I wanted to treat him as an individual. We should have the right as parents to decide what our individual children need based on what they're capable of. We know best what our children need.
That's right.
I should get to decide for my child, just like I should get to decide whether I want to take a relaxed approach and work on what he needs individually, instead of having to go up to every single person in the building and say, it's okay, my son has autism, my son has autism, my son has autism, all day long. It's exhausting. It's upsetting. My child should not have to hear his label every time I come up to the door and that teacher doesn't know that he's autistic.
That's right.
I shouldn't have to explain, I'm sorry, my son's autistic, so he's not wearing this mask. It should be my choice. The teachers should not be put in a position where they have to police the children on their masks either. They should be providing nurturing and love and education. They shouldn't have to spend half of their day saying, hey, Timmy, pull up your mask over your nose so we don't all get infected by your germs and scaring children. My child comes home scared that everybody has germs and he's going to get sick all the time. He's never been sick a day in his life. He's never had antibiotics, surprisingly, ever. But he thinks that suddenly, everybody's going to kill each other and everybody's going to die. And when you have a child that already has autism, those thoughts of, you know, somebody might get sick and get a cold, he doesn't understand that. He's thinking these germs are actually going to kill him. So that's just all I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. David Waterman and then Adam Norden. David Waterman and then Adam Nordstrom.
I know that everybody here wants to do what the experts say. I wish everybody here wanted to do what's right regardless of what the experts say. I wish that was more important. But because you trust the experts, I'm going to give you some expert information. Starting with an article from the CDC Centers for Disease Control. It's entitled "Operational Considerations for Personal Protective Equipment in the Context of Global Supply Shortages for COVID-19 in Non-US Healthcare Settings." This one's short. It says, "Non-medical fabric masks are not considered PPE and their ability to protect healthcare workers is currently unknown. PPE is personal protective equipment. Personal protective equipment is what you need to protect you from something that could harm you, like a pathogen, for example, like COVID-19 or influenza or the measles or any other kind of infectious disease." PPE, Personal Protective Equipment. It says, "Non-medical fabric masks are not considered PPE. Some studies suggest that it may lead to a false sense of protection and even increase influenza-like illness relative to wearing a medical mask could increase influenza-like illness and provide a false sense of security." That's the CDC. This is advice on the use of masks in the context of COVID-19 from the WHO, the World Health Organization. They give five potential benefits of wearing masks in the context of COVID-19. Five potential benefits. They include things like reminding people to be compliant with other measures, reduce potential stigmatization of individuals wearing masks to prevent infecting others, or making people feel that they can play a role in contributing to stopping the spread of the virus. Feelings are important, aren't they? Here's my favorite. "Potential social and economic benefits amidst global shortages of masks, encouraging the public to create their own fabric masks may promote individual enterprise and community integration. More for the production of non-medical masks may offer source of income for those who are able to manufacture them within their communities. Fabric masks can also be a form of cultural expression." I don't know if that's any of the reasons that you want to promote children wearing masks in schools. I don't think any of those are good reasons to wear a mask. Here are the harms listed by the WHO. "Potential increased risk of self-contamination due to manipulation of face masks and subsequently touching eyes with contaminated hands." We've never seen that before, have we? "Potential self-contamination that can occur if non-medical masks are not changed when wet or soiled. This can create favorable conditions for microorganisms to amplify. Potential headache and/or breathing difficulties depending on the type of mask used. Potential development of facial lesions, irritant dermatitis, or worsening acne when used frequently for long hours. Discomfort, difficulty communicating clearly, a false sense of security leading to potentially lower adherence to other critical preventive measures. Poor compliance with mask-wearing, particularly in young children. Waste management issues. Difficulty wearing them, especially for children, developmentally challenged persons, those with mental illness, elderly persons with cognitive impairment, those with asthma or chronic respiratory or breathing problems." How many children are, have a health, having a health assessment done to determine whether or not they can safely wear a mask all day long in school? I'm curious to know that. I'm wondering how much money or time you've spent doing health assessments on individual children to see if wearing a mask all day long in school is actually safe for them. My final quote is from an article published in the New England Journal of Medicine called "Universal Masking in Hospitals in the COVID-19 Era." I'm not going to read only a small part of this. "We know that wearing a mask outside of healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection." I might have read that too fast, so I'm going to read it again. "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection. I don't think any of the Grand Forks Public Schools are considered healthcare facilities. Am I wrong about that? Because according to the New England Journal of Medicine, a mask offers little, if any, protection from infection." I know that you all don't hear the stories that we hear. I'm in a position as the Executive Director of Midwest Public Health Coalition to hear from parents and what their children are going through. And I cannot tell you how deeply disturbed I've been by the stories that I've heard. I truly hope you have not heard the same stories that I have and have continued this policy. Because if you have, that tells me something about you that I'd rather not know. The truth of the matter is that fear is running many of these children's lives. Some of them will come out of this okay. I'm not suggesting that it is going to destroy all of them. But many of them are fearful because seeing people in masks tells them that the air is toxic. A five-year-old boy who loses his mask in a playground and has a full-blown panic attack because he's confident he's going to die because the air is toxic. A 16-year-old boy, 16-year-old boy who already has a health condition and is so fearful because of the mask mandates and seeing all this stuff going on that he now has severe OCD. He washes his hands constantly. He takes five showers a day to make sure he doesn't have any COVID germs on him that are going to kill him. I'm not trying to get personal here. But there's a health professional who has been counseling children for 40 years. She has never lost a patient to suicide until last year due to the mandates, the masking, the social distancing, all of that stuff. And this healthcare professional with a PhD in child development who says that what's happening to the children across the board is incredibly harmful and devastating to some, was making this announcement. She's been on radio and television, and she was telling this story. And she received a call from you, Dr. Brenner. And you asked her if that nine-year-old girl who took her own life because she couldn't see her friends anymore, she couldn't see grandma because she was going to kill grandma if she saw grandma, and she took her own life, and you asked her if that girl was in this school district. And when she said no, you said, okay, thank you, and ended the conversation. I spoke to her myself, Dr. Brenner, before I came here to make sure that I got the story straight. I spoke with you, Dr. Brenner, for over an hour a year ago and provided you with scientific evidence demonstrating the harm and the uselessness of masks against COVID-19. I want to know, because she wasn't in this school district, is it okay? And is that what it's going to take for someone in this school district to reach a point where they can't handle it anymore and they take their own lives? A person who takes their own life, a child, a young teenager who takes their own life, is that what it's going to take to change the policy here? For you all to have blood on your hands? I pray it's not. Thank you.
Adam, Adam and then Justin Johnson after Adam.
I believe you had said Adam Nordstrom. I couldn't.
Yes, I'm sorry. I sluttered through your last name. I apologize.
No, it's a really difficult way to spell Norwegian. I get it. I'd like to start with a short little 40-second clip here.
...getting an infectious disease and having to have you as my doctor is what? Wearing a mask?
No, no, no.
I don't need to do that. Somebody's, I can see they're getting ready to sneeze or cough, walk away.
You avoid all the paranoid aspects and do something positive. A, good diet. B, you don't smoke, I know. I know you don't drink, at least not very much, so that's pretty good. Get some exercise. I know that you don't get as much exercise as you should.
That's correct.
Get good sleep. I think that the normal, low-tech, healthy things are the best thing that you can do, David, is stay healthy.
All right, well, I'm going to try to do that. And hopefully, when I'm next to you, I'll be even healthier than I am.
Hail Fauci, correct? This one's more or less towards all of us parents. "Parents have the authority of RSA 197-2 in a single-town school district or RSA 195.13 to call for a special meeting so voters can override the school board. We can download the school board's district petition template, which I had called today to look for, and I went through their school, couldn't find one. So hopefully, we do have one, because if not, that's a serious problem. Fill in the blanks, blah, blah, blah. Modify the subject matter so that we can have our own vote to come in and say what we would like to say. The use of face covering shall be an option for all students at the sole discretion of the parent or guardian." Not giving us that right yet. We can continue on with this and we can, as together, which calls for either a quarter of the voting population of our city or 50 signatures. 50 signatures is easy for us to come together. I will hand out my phone number to any of you. Any of you. We get 50 signatures and we come together at the next meeting with legislature designed. We can eliminate every one of these little hail Fauces. We can come through. We can change our school district for the better. I, for one, I'm an awesome heating and air conditioning guy. If any of you would like a good service on your furnace or air conditioner, please let me know. I'll come if you pay me. We need to take this school system back. We need to take our lives back and our rights back. Now I'm going to turn back towards you. The Nuremberg Code. I'm not sure many of you know what it is because you've been in violation of Sections 1, 3, and 6. Section 1 says, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is an absolute essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent." My children don't have the legal capacity to give you consent on whether or not they can't breathe enough oxygen. You need to watch some videos on OSHA training because I, as a construction worker, have been through OSHA training. And any different room that you're in that has less than 60% oxygen is volatile to your health. Let's continue on. "Without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, distrust, deceit, overreaching, the other ulterior form of consent or coercion, and should have sufficient knowledge and comprehension of the elements and subject matter involved to enable him or her to make an understanding and enlightened decision." This continues on. To be in violation of the Nuremberg Code? I don't know if you know your history, but that wasn't a good thing. That is considered crimes against humanity. Crimes against humanity is a very, very, very serious punishment. And back in the day after World War II, I believe they were all hung. I'm not saying that's what will happen, but prison sentences are a real good start. Now, I'd also like to add, my daughter has asthma and is at Viking Elementary. Her asthma medications are a steroid that we have to give her. We have increased double the amount of steroids we've given her. I want grandkids. I have three beautiful daughters and now a 13-day-old beautiful son. But my chances with her having a kid now are slim to none for the continual use of steroids in her lungs that continue to feed into the rest of her body. Now, another thing. Today I did the walkthrough at the school and everything. It was really cute, fun. I've offered my labor to add in UV light systems to these schools that will kill these viruses, that will kill the bacteria. Because bacteria, viruses, and mold are carnivorous. They eat themselves. So as you have a dead virus, any live virus, bacteria, or mold product that is there and living will continue to grow off of itself and grow at an alarming rate. People who live in houses, I put in multiple UV light systems, and they've called back and said that they've never felt better before. I wonder why. There is no continual growth of bacteria, viruses, and mold within their ductwork that is making them sick in their own homes. I've done it to my house because of my daughter's asthma. It was another $500 expense for me to do. It is a very simple process, and I'm more than willing, if we can get the funding. I had brought this up to Scott earlier. Respectable guy, I like him. I've talked to many of you on the phone between last year and this year, and you're going to continue to talk to me because I am a warrior for my children. And not only that, I'm a Viking you don't want to mess with. That is not a threat towards any of you, but I will be on the phone. I will be on emails, and I have a lot of screenshots off of Facebook, if you wouldn't know. My daughter's a language arts teacher. I met her at the bar. At the bar with other teachers present. She had admitted to Indian leg wrestling, which is laying on your back, sticking one leg up and trying to pull the other one down to the ground. At the poorhouse. Then where she had went to rumors. And then where I had finally met her at Southgate. You want to talk about transmissibility? Well, I'm going to tell you now. Being 45 to 50 years old, your transmissibility is pretty high. Your rate of infection is pretty high. My chances of getting stung by a bee are .001. I don't walk around with a frickin' bee suit, Don. You know what my chances are of dying in a car accident? I drive from house to house to house to work in the morning, back home from work in the afternoon. I've got a greater risk of dying in a car accident than I do of a virus with a 99.997 survival rate, even up to your age group. The transmissibility amongst children is slim to none. The infection rate of these children is slim to none. And if any of you are doctors on this board, your medical license holds you at the very first to be held accountable for crimes against humanity, against the Nuremberg Code. I've done very well. And I will do very well for the rest of my life because I work damn hard to take care of my family, and I will continue to do so. My background is messed up. I come from gang territories where I've been stabbed. I've had bullet holes in my sweater. I've had a broken jaw. I've had a cracked skull from a bat. My chances of dying then were great. I've woken up in a hospital so many different times in my life. My jaw sewn shut, can't eat anything but what I can suck through a straw. My chances of that growing up as a kid were great. Great. I snuck weapons into school with me because when I was attacked, guess where I was? School property by four gang members who came in from inner-city problems. We don't have that problem here, thank God, which is why I continue to live here and which is why I will continue to live here. But really, what you guys are doing is very, very far from admirable in any sense of the way. If I was your child, I would look at you in complete disdain, distrust, and absolute sickness in what you're doing. You are not standing up for the rights of even your own children, unless you can afford a private school.
Please wrap it up because you're a few minutes over. Thank you. Justin Johnson and then Mark Peterson is after Justin.
Well, I don't know how I'm going to follow that up all that well, but I'm going to give it my best shot. Justin Johnson, father of four children. I'm going to read this because I'll probably start rambling and get off topic. "Recently, I sent an email to all of you board members voicing my concern about masking our children this school year. Not all of you responded, but several of you did. The common theme that kept coming up in all of your responses was, we need to follow the science. My question to you is, what science? Whose science? I quickly came to the conclusion that most of the board had already made up their mind about a mask mandate for this coming school year, and it was only a matter of time before you got the opportunity to pass the mandate." Opportunity was the language that you, Dr. Brenner, used a week or two before the mandate was passed. Fast forward two to three weeks. Now I'm taking a little segue here, so hang with me. "Fast forward two to three weeks, my daughter, who is in middle school, was handed a worksheet to fill out, asking her what her preferred pronouns were. My daughter did not fill it out because she had no idea what on earth the teacher was asking her to do. So according to our school board, we need to follow the science. So let's follow the science. Science absolutely tells us, without a shadow of a doubt, there are two genders, male and female. Why on earth would some Grand Forks Public School staff be passing out worksheets asking about my daughter's gender? Could they not simply refer to the school registration form my wife and I filled out at the beginning of the school year stating that in fact she was female? I assume there is an effort by some in our schools, not all, some in our schools, to confuse our children into thinking they're something that they're not. I don't want to hear another word from you elected officials about following the science until we actually start following the science, not just the flawed science that fits your agenda. And make no mistake, this board has an agenda."
Thank you. Mark Peterson.
I have some really good news for all you guys. You guys can put this to rest tonight if you like. So COVID-positive rates in Bismarck schools with no dictates isn't any higher than Fargo with dictates. Also, Fargo has 67 active COVID-positive cases as of 9/10 out of 11,400 students. West Fargo has 60... West Fargo has 60-plus cases, or positive cases, out of 12,400 students. They don't have any dictates. I'm not calling them mandates, they're dictates. So, Dr. Brenner, what does that tell you? Go ahead, participate with me. What does that tell you?
I'm sorry, we can't during the commentary.
Yeah, you can. I'm giving you, I'm giving you leave to do it, right now.
We, we, we can do it later, but we can't right now.
No, let's do it right now.
I'm sorry, sir, we, we can't.
Well, he just said something to Waterman. You just said something to him a little bit ago. You interacted with him. Okay, well, let's go on, then. Okay, so, now that we have a couple of weeks with the majority of schools not dictating masks to kids and teachers, and nothing terrible has happened, um, are you all willing to do a quick revote on that tonight, right now? Could I get a show of hands? You don't have to say anything. Show of hands. Who would like to revoke tonight? Bill? You voted against it originally, didn't you? You, you can't? Who's, who are you getting your instructions from, is what I'd like to know? I mean, before everybody in town here, they need to know. Who are you getting your instructions from? We need a name. Who? Somebody at the, in the state level? You can nod. Go ahead and nod. Is it from the state?
Some of the rules for meetings are, are, are in state law, and that's, that's what I'm referring to, is the state law.
What, what state law? Can you tell me which law that is?
North Dakota state law. I can't quote it, I'm not an attorney.
So, by, by state law, you had to do a mask dictate to kids?
No, I'm talking about responding to you. I'm not talking about a mask mandate.
You can't respond to me?
No, I'm talking about during the comment period, we are, we are not allowed.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm giving you leave to do that. I'm telling you, you can do that. I want your participation. I think they do, too. You, you won't participate in that. Dr. Brenner, you sit there behind your mask, okay? A lot of people have contempt for you. Do you understand that? You don't understand that. You just sit there behind your mask, quiet. Okay, let's keep going here. Okay, can any of you tell me why you think you ever had authority or jurisdiction to dictate masks in the first place? And where did you get that authority from? What law would be backing you up on that? You're a student, right? You can nod. You can nod, you're not a robot. Okay, thank you.
Please don't direct the student, that's out of line. Please don't do that. His, his parents are not here. His parents are not here, I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't know how old he is, I know he's a student. I'm just saying. So, be back, what authority do they have? Do you know what authority they have to tell you to wear a mask?
I said, please do not address the student. I don't think he needs to answer you.
He can speak for himself, he's on, he's on, he's sitting here.
We are not allowed to comment.
He can speak for himself.
Back to people during public section, you've already been told this, thank you.
I'm not talking to him, or I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to him. You can, you can speak. It's the United States of America. You can speak. What are we, a mind-numb robots, like Rush Limbaugh used to say? Come on, guys. Speak up.
You, you, I'll speak, your time is almost up, so thank you.
So, Mr. Brenner, what's your salary? Can you tell me that? You can't, can you? Okay, so, let's just go to the Constitution here. Can you tell us with a nod, if any of the students in school right now are being taught the Constitution, especially the first 10 amendments, the Bill of Rights? Can you nod? Are they being taught that? And can you, can you nod that the Second Amendment is specifically being taught in schools? Can you nod at that? Because I know it's not, is it? Because you don't want to say anything about the Second Amendment.
Mr. Peterson, I, I, I won't tell you this again, we cannot respond to your questions. I don't care if it's not interverbally.
Of course you can't, you can nod. You can nod. Yeah, you can, you can respond. You're in front of the public right now. This is where they want to hear you guys. They just, everyone comes in here to speak, but they don't want any interaction with you, or maybe they do. But I want some interaction. This is stupidity. I don't even have kids in school. This is ridiculous. Just respond. Is the Constitution being taught in school, especially the Bill of Rights, the Second Amendment? Can anyone nod if that's being done? Because what did I hear before? I heard something about transgender something, or what's, what are, what's our gender? If that's being taught, if that's being taught, the Constitution needs to be taught. Second Amendment. A lot of people don't like that, because, oh, it's a firearm. We don't want to have firearm in school, do we? So you guys can sit there behind your mask all day, but you just expose yourselves, because you won't even acknowledge anything. Dr. Brenner, you can't even say if the Bill of Rights is being taught in schools, and to what classes, maybe. If you can't, you need to resign, or take a huge pay cut, because I know you're making, like, what, 250 grand a year? This is sickening.
Thank you. Let's move on to item 6, which is Superintendent's Recommendations for Discussion, uh, School Board Norms. Jackie.
I think I'll read all of them. I know we, sometimes we just go through 1 through 7. Uh, 1, be prepared. 2, be on time. 3, value and respect each other. Exercise thoughtful deliberation and conversation. Be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public. Speak up when norms are not being followed. Advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind. Lead by policy. Serve as advocates for K through 12 education. Entrust the day-to-day operations to professionals, let administrators do their work. Assist community members and stakeholders in following the chain of command. Consider da, district and staff capacity and resources, and balance meeting agendas, so one meeting is not heavier than the other.
Thank you. Let's move on to item 6B, which is Smart Restart Update. Dr. Brenner.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Page 6 of the Board Packet is a memorandum from me. And I'm just going to read through it, and then I'll take you through some of the slides. We've changed. We've changed our COVID-19 delect, uh, data collection process to Monday mornings, in an effort to capture the entire preceding week's data. Given that, I'll provide an update at our meeting relative to our present positive COVID cases at the elementary, middle, high school levels, and disaggregate that regarding quarantining as well. At the time of the writing, last Thursday, when the Board Packet went out, the Grand Forks County Dashboard was at the orange level, otherwise known as high risk, and the transmission rate remains in the red, which is high, according to the CDC metric. So let me just go ahead and take you through the slides, starting on page 7. And, Dr. Lewis, if you would please advance that to page 8, or slide 2, I'm not sure. First. Okay, first of all, the celebrations. Staff members are doing a great job of addressing those who need masking protocol reminders. Piloting synchronous teaching and learning is going to take place for some of our students who are quarantined, and even perhaps a teacher who might be able to work from home and zoom into a classroom to provide instruction, so that the school day can continue on as normal. Rapid testing in, uh, in school for staff and students, we're, we're doing when possible. And just want to note that we're also, as a first-line defense, referring people to UND's Fritz Pollard Center. Next slide, please. Uh, some of the challenges. Masks are mostly being provided by the district. Procuring a large volume of masks for short and long-term use has been challenging. Indoor athletic events, such as volleyball, attracts out-of-town fans not fond of our indoor mask requirements. We have experienced the same with some of our own fans. School administrators have provided reminders, however, not all are compliant with our procedures. Next slide, please. This is just a refresher of what I went over last time, as far as building facility mitigation. We're working on fresh air distribution. Masks are provided for everybody, Plexiglas at workstations, hand sanitizer available throughout buildings. We have a 3-foot bubble, wear-attainable. Regular sanitation of high-touch, high-traffic areas, and we're certainly encouraging people to stay home when they are sick. Next slide, please. Just want to make sure I'm on the right one. Quarantining guidelines. We continue to follow those same procedures that we've had in place. If it's mask to mask, no quarantining is required. If it's mask to no mask, then we must quarantine. If the, uh, if the person has vaccination, and that's confirmed, no quarantining is required, yet we want that person to monitor for symptoms. Again, rapid testing at the building level is available for students and with parent or guardian permission. Next slide, please. As far as the absences, HR and Lindsay Stodsted continues to work through these with, with staff, which has been a pretty small number thus far. They're able to utilize all leave accruals, with the exception of bereavement, if it's related to COVID. Efforts are going to be made to keep the employee working, and that goes back to that synchronous teaching, if somebody's able to teach remotely. HR will continue to track positive cases and COVID-related leaves for staff. And designated substitute teachers have been employed at each site, although I know some principals are still working on standing that up in some of our campuses. Next slide, please. Just a reminder of what we're doing at breakfast and lunch. This certainly is a time when everybody is unmasked, so administrators and teachers are working through seating charts, in case there's a positive case, we know how to contact trace. We physical distance where possible. Some of our schools that have more spaces to use are actually using those alternative spaces outside of the cafeteria. And visitors are not permitted during breakfast or lunch during this, during those times. Next slide. Our Smart Restart Committee continues to meet each week on Thursdays at 1:30. We continue to look at the local dashboard relative to where we're at, and we will continue to use that 10-day, 10-day retroactive forecast relative to what color we're into make our next decision. So, we're certainly hoping that numbers will go down in the future. That would be our goal, because there is nobody who wants to have a mask requirement. Next slide, please. Decision-making. Again, I already touched on this, we're using the dashboard. And, uh, once Grand Forks County risk is in the green for 10 consecutive days, then we'll pivot, and also look at the CDC transmission rate. We want that to be in the low to moderate range, rather than the high risk. And, uh, the, the other metric is vaccination rates reaching, reaching herd immunity within our, within our community. So as far as the, the numbers, as of this morning, excuse me, th, these are numbers August 25th through September 10th. We have a total of 26 students who have tested positive, K through 12. Total of 13 staff, or a total of 39 positive COVID cases in our district. That's both students and staff. And I don't have that disaggregated by elementary, middle, and high school, as I indicated that I would. We just had a little data collection issue this morning. As far as close contacts, um, we've had a, a total of 207 close contacts, and the number that's been recommended to quarantine would be 47. And that's because students were masked to masked at that time, so a large number of students and staff who are considered close contacts did not have to quarantine. And that is the update, uh, board members, that I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Brenner, for the clarifying questions or comments. Jackie.
I'm just curious, on the 47 who quarantined, were they always close contacts via school? Or is that include maybe household contacts and those things of that nature?
Yeah, it's a, it's a combination of both.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Thank you. Let's move on to item C, which is Summer School Reports. And I think Mrs. Gilat and Dr. Lewis, are you kicking this off, or are we going straight to? Okay. Mr. Onsted, you, you are up first, so thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for having us on our Summer School Summary and Report this evening. First of all, thank you, board members, for, uh, your service during the COVID-19 issues that we're, we're working through. Thanks to all of you that came out and helped out at our Red River Central football game, and, and volunteered some of your time to, uh, help make that a pretty memorable event, memorable event for both, both schools. It's encouraging to, uh, to have these events and, and be hav, having activities continue to the best we can. Also, want to just thank Deb Koopman for her time. As you know, it's, the Summer School just doesn't happen, but, uh, it happens because of people like Deb Koopman, uh, working hard for everybody and, and always behind the scenes and not getting a lot of recognition. I, I get to say I'm the elementary summer school director, but she, um, puts a lot of hours and time into this work, and I really appreciate her, so just wanted to recognize her. As you probably remember, our elementary program shifted from June to August, and we provided a 15-day program this year, August 2nd through the 20th, and we combined our reading and math program. So in the past, many of you are familiar that we had a, a reading program and a math program. The reading program was offered in June, while the math program being offered in August, and then our Introduction to Kindergarten program. So this year, we changed and made the recommendation to you, which you approved, that we would try having our reading and math combined in August for 15-day session, along with our Introduction to Kindergarten program, also in that same 15-day period from August 2nd through August 20th. I will tell you that administratively, we chose at our last meeting to wait until October to have the collaborative conversation and decision-making about summer school, because we had some other, um, well, like COVID-19, for example, we had on the agenda, and we didn't feel like we had the time to review all of our summer school data and look at a collaborative conversation about what we should do next year, and what that format will. So I don't have an answer for you about what that format's going to look like. I will tell you that it, it made things a little bit more interesting for our administrators, knowing they were getting ready for school to start, and we were also in the, in the middle of COVID-19 issues. At that time, we were not requiring masks, so we had to close several classrooms because of close contacts and because of COVID-positive cases. We had to close some classrooms at a couple of different schools. So, I will tell you that the enrollment data is in front of you. You have, I would now like to maybe phrase the historical data as the Eric Lund Historical Data Sheet, um, because Dr. Lund likes to refer back to the historical data of summer school. So you have that sheet in front of you, and you also have this year's enrollment numbers. And as you can see, uh, during our COVID time, where we were right in the middle of the thick of things, we, our, our enrollment numbers were really down. And so this year, we were up about 218 students overall, which I think is a nice, a nice number, considering we only offered a 15-day program for our elementary summer school program. And as a reminder to you all, the, uh, reading and math program is a reimbursable program through the North Dakota Department of Public Instruction. The Introduction to Kindergarten program is not a reimbursable program through DPI, but it's a program that the district supports. Deb also included for you the staffing numbers for each program. She has the, the staff and the paras that were hired for reading and math, and she has a staff and paras listed that were hired for our Introduction to Kindergarten. And then a final reminder I would have for you is, we try to have a very small ratio for our summer school programs. In our reading and math, we try to keep it at 12 to 1, so 12 students per teacher. In our Introduction to Kindergarten, we try to keep those classrooms at about 15 to 1. And we were able to, to honor those numbers with the amount of staff we were able to hire. With that, I would take any summer school questions you might have, and just, that's a very quick, brief summary for you.
Any further clarifying questions or comments for Mr. Onsted? Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Mr. Onsted, you mentioned that you had done this previously in June and August, and this year was strictly August. Is, is, is you only have one year? Is, is there something you saw that would say, you know, we should go this route or that route, or?
Yeah, anecdotally, the, yeah, great question. The feedback, you know, I would say, for most part, especially with Introduction to Kindergarten, has been overwhelming, that they, they really like having the Introduction to Kindergarten in August, because they feel like they're getting those kids ready for kindergarten right away, right? So they're getting those, those, we hope that we get as many kids, I, like, we talk at our kindergarten registration events, we say, I say to the parents, we want as many of our kindergarten students that are going to be with us in the fall to enroll in this Introduction to Kindergarten program, because a lot of our kindergarten teachers are actually teaching that summer school session as well. They're getting to know their kindergarten teacher. They're getting to know a half-day routines and rules and procedures and how school works. And it just goes really well for them to transition right into school after that. So I think that, for sure. I think we need to get more input from our administrators about the reading and math combo, and how that worked out, and how they felt, just because of the added administrative load, so to speak, when you have, like, I'll speak for Discovery, for example, and they have nearly, probably, well, it's actually over 100 students with the introduction to kindergarten and math and reading in their building for a summer school program while they're getting ready to start school. That, that adds just a little bit more of a dimension to their preparatory work as they begin getting ready for the new school year. That's what I was hearing from my colleagues.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Amber?
So my daughter said that she got a sack breakfast for the start of the day for intro to kindergarten every year. Was that something different that was this year? I can't remember if breakfast has always been provided.
Yeah, it, we have provided breakfast, and that's been, many years we've provided that. There are also a couple of sites that actually provided lunch as part of the Encore program and provided some lunch offerings as well. So a few schools were sites, as well as were sites for curbside pickup for meals that continued through the child nutrition program. So thank you for bringing that up, Amber.
Was Encore added this year?
We've done Encore, different sites in the past as well. And so this year, we had it at two sites, but we've had, actually, some years we've had it at multiple sites. Yep, with Kayla's support and her encouragement to do some of that summer programming as well. And then that provides an afternoon where they can go to, because if you remember, this is a four-hour program we're talking about, then they could do an afternoon as well with Encore programming.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I just, one quick one, one, Kevin. How about difficulties finding staff to teach you? Did you have much difficulties in, in being able to staff all the classes?
Surprisingly, we were okay. We had, at the, probably the, you know, last hour or so of the, right before getting ready in the, the final session, that final push, we were probably short one to two teachers, where we really had to do some recruiting and we really had to do some creative thinking. So as far as I'm concerned, when you look at the numbers that we hired, and we were only looking for one or two at the end. In the past, we haven't really had to recruit or look hard. We've had plenty to serve our, our need. So I, I do think there's some merit to thinking the August time for teachers is a little bit harder than June, because they really value that August time with their families rather than the June schedule.
Oh, go ahead, Cynthia.
I apologize if you said this. I'm looking at the intro to kindergarten numbers. Discovery had 72. So, so is that because they have, how many kindergarten classes does Discovery have during the regular school year?
I'm not 100% sure how many they have, but I think they have four. Does that sound right, Dr. Brenner? I think, I think they run four sections of kindergarten, maybe even five. And so they would be running, I know for introduction to kindergarten, they ran four, four sessions with those numbers, four, four classrooms, four sections.
So just bigger school all around?
Correct. Yep.
And then my next question is of parent feedback?
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the August dates again? Did you, do you have any parent feedback, or are you planning to get parent feedback?
I would say mainly it would just be conversations with administrators and teachers that we've had the parent feedback so far. We haven't surveyed them to see exactly, you know, how everybody feels about the date and the time. I, in speaking to the kindergarten families at Phoenix, they certainly appreciated August because it, they felt like it was a great time for them. I think in the past, when they've had it in June, they felt like there was a lot of time there in between June and then starting school. And so their kindergartners would not quite be as ready to begin school versus that August timeframe. The, the math and reading, unfortunately, when we're running a summer school remediation program, a lot of our summer school students aren't that thrilled with coming to extra school. You know, we'd like to think that, you know, they all love coming, but I think that a lot of times, that's, that's hard for them as well, when they, they know that it's not required, but it's recommended that they come so that we can catch them up and we can get them at a grade level. So for the student perspective and the parent perspective for math and reading, I think it'd probably be a, a variety there.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Maybe I should know this, and I'm a little embarrassed, but so when you have the math and reading combo, not all kids, right, will be necessarily referred to be doing both math and reading?
Sure.
Right? Okay, so you might have some kids who are just there for reading, some kids just for math, some kids for both?
We gave, yeah, we gave them both regardless. So we just, we, instead of trying to split and try to figure that out, we just said, we're going to have the teacher provide the service, and we're going to have the teacher do the assessments, and if they need a little bit more reading, we'll give them a little bit more. If they need a little bit more math, we'll give them accordingly. And so we asked the teachers to differentiate that based on the student and what their needs were, instead of trying to say they could only come for this block of time and only come for this block of time, because we wanted them there for the entire four hours. We figured it's going to help them regardless. And some of them that were really strong in math were good role models and good peer helpers for those that maybe struggled a little bit more.
Any further questions? Dr. Lewis, or comments, I should say?
Thank you. Discovery, we have five sections of kindergarten and 96 enrollment, students enrolled in Kinder.
Yeah, so the answer to that was, she said that Discovery had five sections of kindergarten currently at their school versus what the numbers were for introduction to kindergarten. So we had 72 enrolled, and we have, I think you said 96, Brenda? 96 currently enrolled at Discovery. I would say that's a pretty good ratio of getting those kids into intro to kindergarten.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. That was the most questions I've ever had, so thanks for putting me on the hot seat, everybody. Yep, have a great night.
Let's move on to secondary summer school, and Mr. Wilber.
Mr. President and other members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Just wanted to give you a brief summary of the 2021 summer school session. We'll start with the high school session first. We started on June 1st and ended on July 7th. That's 26 days of a session. We had 845 total seats enrolled. Remember, students can take either one credit classes, one one-credit class, or two half-credit classes, which was actually lower than the 901 total seats that we had enrolled last year for 2020 summer school. Just remember, though, last year's 2020 summer school session was completely done online. In comparison to our last in-person session, which was in 2019, we had 804 seats enrolled, so our numbers were actually higher this year than they had been in 2019. Students take summer school in the high school level for really two reasons. They either want to get ahead and basically free up their schedule so they can pick some electives, or they're individuals who are retaking courses when they'd failed to earn credit in them. Summer school day at the high school level consists of two blocks, one from 7:45 a.m. to 10:05 a.m., and the other from 10:05 a.m. to 12:25 p.m. Attendance is taken daily, and students are only permitted to miss a total of five hours and a half-credit class and 10 hours in a full-credit class. We strictly follow our attendance policies since we were doing such, so much academic work in a very compressed timeline. One of the nice things about high school summer school is parents are updated daily if their student misses any time in class. At the end of the day, in all, 730 full or half credits were actually awarded this summer in the high school session, so our numbers were pretty good in terms of kids picking up credits by taking those classes. At the middle level, just like Kevin had talked about, we made the change traditionally in 2019, and going all the way back since then, we had been in June, but we moved to August, and we went from August 2nd to August 20th. This is the first year that we actually added incoming sixth graders to our, our group, and it looks like, if you look at the data, it looks like they really kind of bolstered our numbers this year, with them accounting for about 95 math and reading seats together. We had, we had a highest number of enrollees in both math and reading going back all the way to 2015, and a relatively high completion rate with 92% of our math students finishing and 94% of our reading students finishing. Middle school students can take remedial math, remedial reading, or both, so they have those options. And I think the other piece, and I know Kevin had talked a little bit about this before, but some of the feedback I got from staff and, and some of the younger students as well, is it was, it was nice for them to be able to actually be in the classrooms that they're going to be in next year. I know we had that experience at South at least, with even having some of the same teachers that some of the students might have. So that was, that was some feedback that I, that I received from, from staff and students. That, that's all I have, just before I, I stop talking, just wanted to take a brief moment to, just like Kevin, thank some of the people that make summer school happen, specifically in, in my office, my secretary, Lee Olson, she's just, she puts everything together. She organizes the sections at the high school level and just puts in a ton of hours to make that work. Also want to thank Scott Conrad, who's kind of the brains behind our attendance operation. He's the one that created the Google Sheets that everybody uses and that can send out the emails instantaneously for parents as soon as the summer school day is done, so they can be updated on attendance. And then last but not least, I'd like to just publicly thank our, our teachers and our paras. They do just a wonderful job for us, and kids get a quality education in a compressed amount of time, and it's very, I mean, for those of you that have been in the classroom, it's challenging enough to plan for a 50-minute period, but when you have kids for an entire morning, it's pretty impressive to see the different things that they do and how they change things up to keep, to keep kids engaged. And, and so I was just, I just want to make sure I mention that as well. Do you guys have any questions for me? Or do you use them all up on Kevin?
Clarifying, clarifying questions or comments? I just have an anecdotal story. I know how hard these kids try, because I had a, a kid a couple of years ago that had an appendectomy for appendicitis, and he, I had to get him out of the hospital before 8 a.m. because he was going to miss his hours. And he went back and he got an A in that class, so the students are very dedicated, so...
I, I can't tell you how much of my time during summer school was spent talking to families about my kid missed for this reason or for that, and it's just, it's, we try to stay as consistent as we can. There's, of course, exceptions. That horrible accident that happened out on Highway 2, where the semi-truck ran into all the vehicles. We had a student that was actually involved in that, and his mom was a nurse, first responder, trying to resuscitate somebody, and, and still brought the child to school, and he was all shook up. And dad was upset, and so I talked to dad, and I said, whoa, 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 you didn't understand, we didn't know, and we worked that out and, of course, made that concession. But yeah, other, other than that, we, we, we run a pretty tight ship.
It goes to show you the dedication of our students and what it's all about.
Yep, absolutely.
Other clarifying questions or comments from anybody? If not, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Let's move on to driver education.
Good evening, members of the board. Driver's Ed in 2021 went very well. Four sessions of driver's ed, mostly in the month of June, a couple of weeks into the month of July. Student enrollment this year was what I would characterize as back to what it used to be. 300-plus students enrolled, 300 students successfully completed. Instructor numbers looked much better this year than they had in the past, thanks to three additional certified instructors in 2021. The cars that we drove this year, it was an interesting experience for our partners in driver's ed at Rydell and also at Grand Forks Kia. It was not an easy time in the summer of 2021 to get vehicles. They were able to secure vehicles, and I always want to thank them for what they do for our program. I want to thank them twice or maybe three times, because they went above and beyond to make sure that our students are driving 23,000-plus miles in quite comfortable vehicles. So thank you to Rydell for their, their efforts supporting our driver's ed program. In the category of something different that I haven't shared before, we are offering and have offered for a couple of years, two styles of completion certificates. Correction, two styles of certificates. One of them is called the completion. A student who receives the completion certificate is basically waiving the need to take a road test. That is that the instructor has deemed this student to be of adequate skill, that they have no need to, in fact, register to take a road test, and that is the, the procedure that has been in place for a few years in, in North Dakota. This year, we had 97 students out of 300 earn that distinction. And I'm telling you, our instructors are not giving those away. You know a good driver when you're, when you're with one, and, and so these, these youth are pretty good drivers. And then, of course, those that are not receiving a completion certificate, receive their training certificate, and they need to practice some more, with mom and dad, with grandma, whoever it is. And so I just thought that that would be an interesting piece of information for you as board members. I hope that we can continue our driver's ed program in the same fashion next year. I'm hopeful that we can gain one additional instructor with a staff of somewhere around 20 instructors. We can run a program serving 300 students in our summer driver's ed program. With that, I want to remind the board that it is an open invitation to join us in the car for a ride-along anytime you like. I can find a comfortable car for you if you'd like. There's only one of you that has the opportunity to do that so far, but if you'd be interested, I will arrange it. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have grandchildren that are now driving age. I feel like I already hit, hit that mark, so... Clarifying questions or comments for Mr. Bohan? Terry, could you just, just take a quick moment and for educate the board members that maybe don't know about Mrs. Jirdy and, and what she was honored with today, just a, a quick blurb about that?
Absolutely. Sherry Jirdy, a family consumer science teacher and business ed teacher at Community High School. At the end of the year last year, she received the Grand Forks Public Schools Teacher of the Year Award, subsequently received the Grand Forks County Teacher of the Year Award. And then that regard was entered into a opportunity to pursue the Teacher of the Year for the state of North Dakota, which Sherry then pursued. And this summer, she was selected as a finalist for the North Dakota Teacher of the Year. And so this afternoon, we were able to have a little, an additional recognition ceremony for Mrs. Jirdy and celebrate her achievements as an educator. She will find out if she is the final winner at the end of this month. The other three selectees, I believe, were from Harvey, Minot, and Valley City. And so that is a great recognition for Sherry, for our school district, and certainly for Community High School.
And, and the one fact that I didn't, wasn't aware of, I should have been, but that Superintendent Basler said is, she's one of four finalists for over 8,000 teachers in North Dakota. So over 8,000 teachers, she's one of the four finalists. I, I was, I had forgotten how many teachers we had in this great state, so, so, thank you, Terry, appreciate that. Let's move on to our SPA report, and Ms. Peterson, thank you for being here.
Good evening, members of the board. It was good to be back this summer. It was good to see the students on stage. It was great to see them behind the scenes. It was great to have the fantastic staff all working together again. It was absolutely fantastic to see patrons in the seats again. And so I'd like to share a few highlights that we had for this summer. Registration this year was a bit lower from when we left off in 2019. We were kind of expecting that. There were 878 students enrolled in SPA programs. Keep in mind that this year's total student numbers, as well as the enrollment numbers in the future, are not going to include the Grand City's Children's Choir numbers anymore, and so that's another reason why the numbers seem a little bit lower. Most of our registrations were done this year online via MySchoolbox, with the exception of out-of-district students and families that requested financial assistance. It was a new experience for me and for the returning families that registered. There were minimal bumps and issues, but it saved countless hours of keystroking data for over 800 students. It also allowed refunds to go smoothly and more efficiently. High school SPA students can receive fine arts elective credits for SPA participation. 154 total credits were given to Grand Forks Public School students. Program-wide, there were 750 hours of arts programming offered to students that were pre-K through grade 12. Working with a smaller budget, of course, had its challenges, but it worked hard to keep the spending in check. We utilized grants and donations in a more comprehensive manner. We used grant funding to keep our Bands on the Red and MySPA programs going as they had in the past, and we were also able to provide an arts component to EL High School Summer School through the hiring of guest artists that were chosen by the EL Summer School staff. Donations and other grant funds helped to pay for supplies and technical equipment, provide mentoring activities for our students, pay for auxiliary staff, and to reimburse registration costs incurred by students that requested financial assistance. Staffing is SPA's biggest expenditure. In 2019, we had 63 staff members. I think the report I sent in said 2020, but that was an error because we didn't have SPA last year. In 2021, we had 45. Most were lost to attrition. Some other adjustments to our programming and scheduling and facility usage allowed us to keep spending more in check overall. Our budget is awkwardly placed between two fiscal years, since we operate in June and July, so fiscal year 2021-22 will be our first full-budget year after having last summer off, so I'll have a clearer picture of the budget numbers when this fiscal year comes to a close. All our performances of the high school productions of Cinderella and Freaky Friday were sold out at the 50% capacity limit that was set by the district at the time. 50% capacity, of course, means 50% less gate sales, so the revenue obviously was half. We hope that's a temporary issue. All in all, 9,000 audience members came to see the 30 performances that were held by SPA K through 12, pre-K through 12. All in all, we had a wonderful summer. We're grateful for those of you who took the time to come see the productions, to see the kids that worked behind the scenes, or if you enrolled your students in the programs, thank you. And we are grateful for the continued support we receive from you and from the community, and we're looking forward to SPA 2022, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Clarifying questions or comments? I know Cynthia and I go back and forth on asking this question, so I guess it's my ear. Can you tell us a little bit about kids that, that have financial hardships and the opportunities we have for, for, for those kids who, who the parents or family or guardians can't afford?
Sure. I would say roughly 10% of our students require financial, or request financial assistance. On our form that we have, we do ask if they... financial assistance. On our form that we have, we do ask if they receive free or reduced lunch, and then their fee is waived based on that. We have had, you know, total hardships too, where if a family has, you know, lost their home to a fire or something like that, we will, of course, take hardships if they're not on the free or reduced lunch list. We have a very generous donation base that allows us to get funds so that we can cover the costs of the students, so that the, those costs are, you know, reimbursed. But, you know, we really want to make it a program for everybody. And we want everybody that can participate to be able to participate. And if cost is an issue, we want it to be a non-issue. So we want every child that wants to participate, the ability to participate.
Thank you. Any further clarifying questions or comments?
I have a question and a comment. First, I'll say, as a parent who has stood in the line at Red River to register, I know COVID probably had some impacts on that, but the online registration was very easy and user-friendly. So I'm glad that that sort of jump-started that process. My question is, for high school students, so you talk about like staff shortages and things like that, but I'm curious about, do you pay high school students to be involved as teachers or individuals who set up the, like, stage and build things?
If they've graduated.
Okay.
So once they've graduated, they can apply for SPA and work for SPA, but we don't pay anybody until they have graduated.
Okay. Can they, they can volunteer?
They can volunteer and register, yep. And if they spend, you know, thirty hours, then that's a quarter credit. So that's for the high school program, yeah.
Okay, great. And did you have a lot of volunteers, or?
Volunteers for the, we have, I think this year we had over fifty. Most of them lie with the MySPA program. There's, but we have parents that usher, most of our volunteers are parents.
Okay.
And, and then of the volunteers we have with the MySPA program. But we do have many students that come to just build costumes, or put in tech hours, or run a spotlight, or that type of thing. And we kind of integrate that into the program, if they're a student.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a person, the person who facilitated the line that went out the door for the registration night, it was very nice to not have to do that.
Dr. Lewis or Ms. Glatch, do you have any final thoughts on any of the summer school programs?
I just want to thank the individuals, I know some left already, but who facilitate these programs. It's an awful lot of work. They make it sound so easy, but if you add up the number of students that they serve, times that by the number of hours they put in, it's a pretty extraordinary service for our students. Allison has taken over some big shoes to fill and has really knocked it out of the park. So I think standing innovation for her as well, and completing her first full year in this position is definitely warranted. And, and Mr. Bohan there, and, and Mr. Wilbur, and Mr. Anstet, they continue to refine and innovate within the programs and offer different experiences for kids that meet the needs of the kids in front of them. It's really extraordinary. So it's not like we've, it's, summer school at any level is being done the same way it was twenty years ago. So it's just kudos to that team for, and the teachers involved and pairs involved for doing all they do to serve kids well.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, since we're running so late, I think we'll, we'll skip the Career Impact Academy tonight. I wish you guys had your masks off. I would like to see your actual whole face. So, no, we, we are running a little late, but we've got some important things to talk about. So let's move on to the Career Impact Academy update, and Dr. Brenner, I think, will kick us off.
Thank you, Dr. Lunn. On page twenty-nine of your electronic packet, you have a memo for me. And let me, let me just say that the Career Impact Academy work is at warp speed. And it's through the efforts of Executive Director Eric Ripley, Keith Lunn, Becca Kruger, and now we've brought some other people on board, along with JLG, Mike McLean. Jonathan Holt is not here tonight. I know Tanya Schleicher, our grant writer, has just blocked out her life's schedule to make this happen. And so they're, they have some slide deck to share with us tonight that wasn't available for your board packet, so you might want to just adjust your seating so you can see what they have to share. So we'll start with Executive Director Eric Ripley. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Dr. Brenner, for the introduction. Thank you, Dr. Brenner, for the introduction. Yeah, I fully recognize that you've had a long evening already, but appreciate the invitation, certainly to be here tonight. Anytime we get a chance to talk about CTE, that's a good thing for me. And obviously, to talk about the progress of our Career Impact Academy momentum that continues to build is a positive thing. And I'm not alone. I have a team behind me. And so certainly welcome them to the, to the podium, the appropriate time to help respond to any questions that you may have. First thing might be is, you know, I think about the last time that we were here, we wanted to utilize this time to really provide you a quick update about where we've gone since that time. And one of the things you might recognize is just the name, Career Impact Academy. Career Academy is very common. I think about the Bismarck Career Academy, the Morehead High School Career Academy. But our steering committee really felt that they wanted to emphasize the positive impact that career and technical education can have on students. And the idea that CTE courses are for students to help identify at an earlier age what they're good at, what they're passionate about, and, and get them to their next step quicker, and accelerate their learning, and really put them in a competitive advantage as they move on to their next step after high school. And so the idea of the word impact in the name, Career Impact Academy, I think is certainly appropriate. Just by the numbers, the, like I said, the momentum continues to build, as does the, the work that gets involved with it. We certainly are, are doing our due diligence to think about the aspects of the grant. There's a lot of players involved. And what's so rewarding about that is that it has, since the very beginning, been a community-led effort. We have six separate committees working on various aspects of the grant. We had a number of people attended site visits. We kind of provided an update about that last time we met. We've had twenty-one working sessions. We have a total of forty-two people serving on committees. And again, that's from across the community, the school district, certainly represented by myself, Catherine Gilach, Dr. Brenner. We also have school board members, Dr. Lunn, Amber Flynn, serving on various committees as well for us. So we are well represented. We have eight hundred and forty-three students that provide their feedback on a survey that we conducted. And we have certainly more surveys planned, both for our in-town and out-of-town students. And we've had one hundred and forty-one businesses provide input to this point. And, and that is on what is their biggest challenge and need. And I'm still in some of Keith Lunn's and Becca Kruger's thunder here, but they're going to talk about how the fact that workforce continues to be the number one biggest issue limiting our growth for our businesses within this region. And so they are certainly engaged in the concept of what a Career Impact Academy could mean for them. Just rough numbers, we're just crunching the numbers here before the presentation. It is not underselling the fact that there's been over a thousand hours put into this by the various people that have been a part of all these committees. And again, that, that number's not slowing down. It doesn't need to slow down. We don't want to slow down, because we can feel like this really is the right time and the right opportunity for our community to, to really stand up something that's going to be a legacy project for this region. So let me go through another update from the last time. And that was, we talked about four potential sites the last time we were here. And the four sites kind of ranged in new development, retrofit, an addition, or kind of an infill development. And so those four sites are kind of represented up here on, on the screens. There's actually, was a fifth one that was added. That's the Alara Center one that we didn't talk about the last time. But that was another new development, right, existing space that doesn't have anything on it. But the facilities committee really came up with saying that, well, there's pros and cons for all four of these viable sites. Some more pros for certain sites than others. But the last time we were here, we talked about the, an RFP, to go and obtain a partnership with an architectural and engineering firm. We had multiple firms apply for that, and ended into a partnership with JLG. And one of the first things that we asked for their expertise was, is to put fresh eyes on the facility committee work and relook at the sites, based off of their expertise, and, and take a look and see if, you know, what they come up with. And at the same time, they then utilized AE2S to have a look at from the civil engineering aspect of it. And what was kind of interesting was, all three groups came up to the same conclusion. And of those four sites, the recommended site from the steering committee is, is the former Holiday Inn or the Grand Forks Inn and Suites site. Access is certainly, for both our in-town and out-of-town students, is, is the best and most equitable option. Great proximity to industry, the University of North Dakota. You're on a corridor, Highway two to Devil's Lake, and, and across the river to East Grand Forks and Northland. There is definitely room for expandability, and there is existing infrastructure. And so we talked about infill development. And the one other thing would be is that that site has been identified by the city for possible in-kind donation. And again, Keith and Becca could speak more towards that side of things. There's, the other four sites are, the three sites are up on the list. Certainly, we could talk about them in great depth. I'll just, I'll pick on Red River, for example, for the reason that we excluded that site after further consideration. And the biggest thing was the, the approximate size of the facility, based off of what was still available at Red River to be able to build onto that school with. There were some major issues with trying to figure out how to fit a facility, you know, roughly a sixty thousand foot, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand foot facility addition onto that site, because the theater performing arts really absorbed all of the stormwater. Essentially, there's no worse places for stormwater to go at the Red River site. And so there would create some additional challenges for adding onto that building. Obviously, there's proximity at industry, access for all of our students. Think about equity for our central students, and, and also for our rural students, were some of the reasons why Red River was not a preferred site. And then the Business Park, Alara Center, there's just, it's new development, potentially pulling that away from other developments, and not having existing infrastructure, create some additional costs in there. And then there's some proximity issues, not for the Business Park. Proximity to industry is great. The challenges with that is, you have some logistical travel, transportation issues with large machinery coming in or out of the Business Park on an hourly basis, combined with student transportation. That was really a, a big challenge. So I just want to kind of give a flavor of those four sites, and again, the rationale of why the Grand Forks Inn and Suites is the preferred option for that. And at the same time, we talked a little bit about programming the last time. So programming has evolved. The program committee taking a look at what programs really are in three buckets. One would be is programs that would stay, or make sense to stay at the existing high schools. So I'll just utilize marketing education, for example. Both high schools have marketing education. They have a school store. It makes sense for those programs to stay within their high schools. Whereas a program like Medical Careers is in both high schools, but really is limited based off of their facility, their space. And we've actually turned kids away countless numbers of times that registered for the course. We just don't have space for them. So that would be a program that should be pulled, in our opinion, from the two schools and put into a third location. And there are programs that we don't currently offer. Welding is up on the list. So we don't have a welding program. We haven't had one since the flood, when we used to have a presence at Central High School. And that is a course that we feel both meets student interest, industry demand, and, and post-secondary options. And so when you look at this list, we're starting to narrow in on things. Certainly would know there'll be a large presence of medical careers in this facility. Agriculture, or what we would maybe refer to as precision agriculture, which plays well with Lake Region State College, one of our partners. Construction or trades, anything in that area is such a need for really our region, but across the nation. Engineering, where we currently have existing engineering programs. Robotics, which we also have already. Welding would be a new program. Information technology in that area, we, we have programs, but again, the ability to expand. And then anything in that transportation. The one that I missed up there is culinary. Culinary would be very new for us, but certainly would be of a program that would align up against student interest, post-secondary opportunities, industry demand. So those are the, that's the lens that we're looking at. We're looking at programming. With existing programs, the idea would be is we'd utilize our existing staff. We would pull them from their existing schools and put them into a, a new location. New, new programs would require new staff. And so if you're trying to do some numbers in your head, I would approximate about fourteen to fifteen of our full-time FTEs that we currently are having teaching at the high school level would be pulled over. And we'd probably need to look at five to six new FTEs. That would be, again, programming defines staffing. And so, again, that's very much a work in order, but in case you're trying to look at some FTE equivalencies. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Becca Kruger from the EDC, and she's going to talk a little bit about next steps. So Becca?
Thank you, and good evening, members of the school board. I'm pleased to be here. Becca Kruger, Workforce Development Manager with Grand Forks Region EDC. I bet you're wondering what's next. So I'm here to talk about that. The first thing that I'm going to talk about is public and student input. One of the things that we've always said is, we're going to talk about this project in the community early and often. Invite stakeholders to the table. You can see forty-two different people and organizations have participated actively in this process. But we know that student engagement is important, and we also know that parent engagement is important, and rural stakeholder engagement is important as well. So we've done some things since we've been here last. We've had some sessions with county commission, of course. We also presented to the Grand Forks Youth Commission and got some of their input as well. And then we plan to have some rural surveys that are sent out. One of the things why that hasn't been done yet is, we really wanted to narrow in and identify possible course codes, and really have students be able to give their input on what they would find interesting before we decided what those programs would be. So a little bit of work to be done there in the programming, before we can get out those surveys, to really bring meaningful input. Another thing that we have planned upcoming is, we've identified a number of different community events we will be at, including, we're looking into the possibility of soccer sidelines, as we're calling them, going out to where we know parents already are, and students already are, happens to be a lot of sporting games, and making sure that we have a presence and are gathering input there. Additionally, tomorrow, we're having what I now know is JLG's favorite term, which is a charrette. For those of you who have to ask what that is, that's me. A charrette is just a, a public engagement session where they'll actually be sketching real-life renderings of what a facility could look like, that will evolve as the day progresses. I put one to five p.m., but there is also a morning session as well. So the public, including yourselves, are invited to come out, interact with JLG as they start the initial designs of the facility. And that will be held in the Grand Forks Herald Community Room. So lots of public and student engagement planned. Fundraising, we have begun initial fundraising conversations. We have a number of one-to-one conversations scheduled. We actually had our first real big one today. Again, we wanted to make sure that we had some information about possible programming tracks and where the facility was going to be located before we entered into some of those conversations, because much like you, those funders are going to have questions as well, that we want to be prepared to have at least some direction and answer for. Additionally, we've held a number of conversations with public entities. I'm pleased to say we've held initial conversations with the city, which have been very positive. You probably have seen it reported in the news, and Erica alluded to it earlier, that they did agree to buy that Grand Forks Inn location and have it demoed. And during those initial talks, both the Jobs Development Authority, the Growth Fund, and City Council all really were interested in seeing that donated to this project. We also had a conversation, initial conversation, oh, and the value of that, just so you know, would be just north of a million dollars. And that doesn't include the demolition of the site, which may be able to be provided for in-kind support. Thank you very much for your support through the Asser Funds. The school board has dedicated a million dollars to this project already, so that we've got secured as well. And then also, initial conversations with the Grand Forks County Commission. We did approach them and say that we would be coming to them for an ask of 1.5 million dollars. Additionally, the EDC board, we have queued them up for an October board presentation ask of 250,000 dollars. So we've started some of those official asks, and also are turning up the heat on industry and scheduling those one-on-one conversations as well. For building, design, and budgeting, we're working For building design and budgeting, we're working to develop those site plans and blueprints and really evaluate those CTE center staff needs and transitions. We're looking at things like construction costs. We definitely have heard you on the ongoing sustainability, and it's something we're keeping top of mind. Much like you know, this is going to be a complex budget. And so when we put it before you, we want to make sure that we have thought through all of the things and been very, very thoughtful in our processes before we put it out to the public. So some of the revenue streams that we are looking at, again, post-secondary education institutions, maybe renting a portion of the facility to do adult learning opportunities. There's additional things, like if a culinary program goes in, could that be additional revenue streams for a community kitchen or a UND food incubator program? And additional programs like CNA courses that may be taught out there or adult incumbent worker training programs like advanced manufacturing, so to upskill the workforce. So all of those things we are looking at, making sure that sustainability is at the forefront of our budgeting models. So the next things that you can expect from us, obviously, if you would like another update as we go on, we hope that we get to come back and talk about this. But for sure, November 8th is going to be our first round review. One of the things we want to do is make sure that we have ample time to engage with all of those stakeholders and that we're not rushing our application. So we definitely are going to go for that December 1st grant round. That also gives us a little bit of an edge because we can request the grant applications for those who have submitted in the first round and learn from their experiences as well. So November 8th, we will be here with the grant completed and for your first round of review. And then from there, on November 20th, we will be back here again for that second review. We want to make sure that we're engaging with you and, again, respecting your ask to see this twice and not feel rushed. So those are some of the next steps, and I will turn it back over to Eric to close.
Okay, that kind of concludes our brief overview. Again, Keith Lund from the EDC, Mike McLean from JLG, myself, Becca. We're happy to stand for any questions that the board may have.
Eric, go ahead.
Yep, go ahead, Doug.
Now, I know it's going to come to this board for two meetings. Does it need to go to the other rural school districts for ratification or approval?
So if we follow the Grand Forks Area Center model, that when we had that governance model approved, we did need memorandums of understanding that were approved by those individual school boards. Essentially, you know, a letter of support that says that they're signed on. The grant does prioritize, if we have six or more school districts that sign on, that you get preference points for that. The whole idea of that is to try to incentivize rural collaboration and not just a single district going out on their own. And so we would need that by the time that the grant needs to be submitted.
Just a point of clarification. I won't be here on November 20th because that's a Saturday, so I'm assuming that's probably a typo.
It very well could be. Although if you keep these meetings going longer, you'll be in the next day already.
Yeah, well, been there, done that. So any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Cynthia.
Question about the PT, Physical Therapy and Occupational Therapy piece.
Sure.
Are you engaging? I have the feeling that, who are you engaging with in those discussions in terms of that as a programmatic choice?
Sure. So one of the, we've done a number of industry roundtables based off certain career clusters, and one of them was health careers. And we had representatives that attended that session from a number of rural or regional healthcare facilities, but specifically Altru and Sanford, I think, had the biggest presence in the room. And we essentially asked them, you know, if you had a magic wand, what are your biggest needs? And that is one of the areas that got identified. We also think that there's, it lines up well from a student interest. We hear about that with our career fairs and our career expo. That is a session that there is a lot of student interest in. And again, at the foundational level, something that students can walk away from high school with certificates. Obviously, there's the ability to have some involvement and placement within our own athletic teams, right, to work alongside with licensed physical therapy, OT, sports medicine. So I think that there's some opportunities for that. But again, that's, again, still, I think, in a work in draft format.
So that's one of the, those are two very active programs at UND.
Mm-hmm.
Getting out into the community in some of the same, you know, some of the industries that you might be talking to.
Sure.
In terms of student internships, even within their classes, they do some practicum work. So that's, you know, just remember, the UND is a really valuable resource for those two.
That's a great point.
Two fields. And then the other thing is, and I have made this point before, but I'll do it again.
Sure.
And that is, I do have concerns about transportation because we aren't, as a district, providing transportation to students to school. And so it, I want to make sure that we're being equitable. And I really think that, you know, funding is tight. I think the district needs to be looking at transportation for kids to get to school in general. So.
Sure.
We're providing, if the location, and it sounds like it's pretty set over by where the Holiday Inn was, I just think that that's a conversation we need to continue to have.
Yeah, no, it's a great point, Cynthia. One of the things that I failed to mention when we're looking at those site selections is there is some existing, those are on existing routes for city area transit where the Holiday Inn versus the industrial park where there is no city area transit available. So as we're utilizing city area transit as a way to help supplement our busing needs to start the school year, you know, is that an option for us to look at? But obviously, it is. It's definitely, again, one of those, as we talk about scheduling and how long kids will be in this facility, transportation is definitely one of those conversation pieces that needs to be answered for you.
And also the adult piece to what you're planning. My experience getting people to adult ed, for example, over at Community High School, was very successful when transportation was provided.
Sure.
By a volunteer organization. Numbers were high. And then as soon as you take away that, then people have difficulty getting to the site. And that's a pretty long site. I mean, it's pretty far away from the south end of Grand Forks, if you think about it. But I think the location is good for the rural schools in particular and probably equal for Central and Red River.
We think so as well.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if, let's just say you have a given topical area. I'm just, I'm going to be very vague with that. And you have Company A and you have Company B, or Group A, Group B. And Group A is willing to give $1,000, and Group B is willing to give $100. Or are you going to allow people to have naming rights? Or is there a process to assure that anyone that wants to give is able to give? Or are you prioritizing? Are you, what's taking place if you have competing entities, I guess, would be the question?
So Keith Lund is chairing our Industry Engagement Fundraising Committee, so I think he'd be the best to answer for that. But I can predict what his answer will be. But I'm going to give him the opportunity since he's been sitting here, so, Mr. Lund?
I believe I know the answer, however, I thought I would ask.
Maybe you can tell us. President Lund, members of the school board, Mr. Doolittle, thank you for the question. Couple of responses to that. Number one, our steering committee is going to be tackling with, you know, the specifics of how we recognize companies, and we recognize that we need to do that. I think it's fair to say, though, if Company A invests $1,000 and Company B invests $100, that there is going to be a greater recognition. And in our travels to other CTE centers, we saw different examples of sort of branding and even with a color template of individual labs. You can imagine any, you know, bill company in the region that might do that. There were investor walls, some of the, we have at the EDC where you put a plaque and they were larger font and sometimes logos, you know, better recognition based on investment. And to some degree, we'll be asking the companies, I mean, you know, what would you like to see? Because, you know, that's one of the things, we're very focused on, you know, the fundraising aspect of that because we have a small, narrow amount of time to do that. We're very focused on the advice and the suggestion that you've given us on looking at sustainability. And so sometimes we need to pause a little bit and take a look at those details. But there will be recognition, and we'll be tackling that very soon. It's a little vague, but we're working on it.
Thank you, just what I thought I would hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douthat. Amber?
Just a comment to your point, Cynthia. I'll just say that every conversation I've been a part of, as it relates to some of these CTE roundtables or subcommittees, access and transportation has absolutely been a point of conversation. So it certainly is on the forefront. And so I just wanted to reassure you that I appreciate the, you know, nod to making sure that this is an accessible place, but individuals are talking about that. So thank you for highlighting that. I just lost my brain. Oh, I know what I was going to say. Evan, so I'm curious, from your perspective, as you hear some of these conversations, from a student perspective, do you have thoughts about sort of the center and possibly spending, you know, a block of time or half a day? You know, if you have an interest area here, is there ways that you can think of student engagement happening? Or have you, have you already been engaged? I just, from a student perspective, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Oh, yeah, well, it actually happens a lot decently, too, because you see a lot of kids coming back and forth between Central and Red River and stuff like that. And it, it works okay, but obviously, like, you leave five minutes early from your class, show up five minutes late, sometimes your next class. So there's a little bit of, I don't know, cons with that. And with the center and stuff like that, too, if we walk into our Med Career Center, that's a two-period class. It's full to the brim with 30 kids on a classroom that should be seating 20 or something like that. So it definitely would be a very beneficial thing for that. And I could definitely see a lot of kids spending multiple periods over there, not just a 150-minute course. They'd be spending three hours of their day in there, not just 50 minutes.
Mr. Ripley, do you want to expand on that, since you and I had this exact conversation last week?
Yeah, to me, I use the term CT plus. I think, I look at, there's a logistics involved, right? From transportation side of it, for what Evan had referenced, that, you know, especially for if you're a rural school, right? What's the amount of windshield time they're willing to give up to be able to participate in a one-hour-long class? I think really the model that we've seen, we've seen a variety of them in our visits, is really a block type of schedule where the students would be there for probably three hours, like there's an AM session or a PM session. One of the things it does is eliminates the need to have to have transportation going on the hour, right? So that's one thing that it does. The other thing it does is it allows the student to either start their day there, come at lunch, or end their day there, one of those three blocks. Not having them there for a full day eliminates the need for lunch and having to provide lunch, and what does that look like? And I also think I want students to be connected to their home school rather than coming from, whether it's Central, Red River, you know, Northwood, Thompson, Laramore, doesn't matter. I think the balance is, you show up at the facility, you get your CTE course plus something else that's going to help you for graduation. So that may be an English class, or maybe a math class. That would be then aligned to that pathway. For example, medical careers, the feedback we got from that cluster was the science they need is anatomy physiology. So could a student that wants to take medical careers, take a two-hour-block medical careers class and then get their anatomy physiology course? Sure, because that's going to be beneficial for them, and they need it for graduation anyway. So is there an ability to maximize that amount of time with the students there to then draw them in, but then also make it so they're not disrupting their entire schedule back in their home school? Those are the types of conversations we're having. I should have mentioned as well, JLG has brought on Boundary Studios from the cities, and all they do is design CTE facilities. And really, to have their expertise in helping to design a facility that meets the programming and not the other way around. Not the, here's the facility and I'll try to fit your programming into it. That's what I feel like currently have. We're doing the best we can with our medical careers space that Evan talks about that should really have probably, maybe 20 is even higher, right? 15 kids in there and has 30. So let's design the facility to meet the programming, and then what are some efficiencies that we can gain for proximity labs, proximity classrooms? Bringing in that type of level of expertise has just been really, really eye-opening for us.
Eric, you kind of alluded to it a little bit, but just so this board hears it early on and sort of the idea of programming and then support resources. So we talked about some of the programmatic things that will go into this space, but there will also be things like potential career counselors and admin onsite. And then can you also talk about the decision at this time to maybe not provide lunch at the space and what other options may be available?
Sure. So one of the things would be is, space would be obviously part of it. If you're going to provide lunch, you need a cafeteria, you need, you know, the necessary space to be able to serve that, you need the staff to be able to not only serve that but also clean up from that. And again, it creates some logistical, some logistical challenges from that side of things. And so, again, that would be our first initial thought would be is lunch could be served at the home school. It also provides a break in time of the day when the student is able to then transfer from point A to point B. We did see models where students were there for the entire day, and those facilities had full-blown cafeterias, which then adds to the square footage and cost of the overall facility. So we don't think that's the right fit for us personally, and so we're leaning to more of that block schedule side of things. And so, you know, I think that that's where the conversation has been up to this point.
Eric, this is going to sound tongue-in-cheek, but I'm serious about it to a degree. I'm wondering if you and the rest of the team that can pledge to not abbreviate Career Impact Academy, because I've already heard comments about it. So can we, can we use the full name and not abbreviate it?
Well, I say CTE a lot, and sometimes people ask me, what does that stand for? And I have to, you know, say, well, it stands for Career Technical Education. I think the same with Career Impact Academy. I certainly think that that's, you know, the new name for what we're talking about this project. And if people abbreviate it after that, I guess that's on them. But, you know, we'll definitely do our due diligence to provide the full name, Career Impact Academy.
Thank you. Other clarifying questions or comments? Mike, did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
You haven't spoke yet. And while Mike's coming up here, I can tell you from my perspective with the charrettes, we did a lot of that at Altru when we were designing the new hospital. And it is a phenomenal technique that gets a ton of information. And so if you can make it tomorrow, it's well worth your time. So anyway, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I invite, thank you for that, Dr. Lund. I like, I appreciate Mike being here, again, from JLG. And then one of the conversations also might be is on maintenance, and that is a piece that he can certainly talk about. That has some impact on the design, but there's some opportunities there, certainly that they have expertise in helping guide us with. So, Mike?
Good evening, members of the board. Yeah, actually, just from putting on my industry hat, from the design and construction standpoint, this is really an awesome opportunity to be involved with this project. Being involved in that industry leader engagement session that Keith led, there's a lot of positive talk about how we can lift each other up in the industry, so not just on the design side, but on the construction side, and how those can merge together as a cool learning opportunity. And from a sustainability standpoint, the future is sustainable buildings, and we're seeing that now, and we're implementing that a lot more. And so I'm excited about how this building could actually be a learning tool for the students in that arena, but also provide opportunities to make it less expensive to run and also explore the materials that we use in the building. So from an industry standpoint, it's been cool to see how we've rallied so far, and we've gotten the input that we had in just two and a half weeks is pretty remarkable and something that I'm really excited to see. Another thing that we heard was students want a cool place to go to. So from a design/architecture standpoint, like, we get really, we nerd out about that a lot. We want to make this a cool-looking facility. So we have to kind of manage how, all those certain things. What's the quality of construction? What's the cost? And what's the quantity? What's the size that supports a program that we are finding out what we need in town? So those are things we're going to be looking at. Total cost of ownership evaluation is something that we do. So that's something that we want to have kind of submitted as part of this grant application because it's only going to strengthen that submission. So happy to be here, happy to answer any questions, and hope you can make it tomorrow. We were excited to dive in and want to be able to let people kind of move things around and see how things start to look. So thank you very much.
Any final questions or comments from board members? Seeing on, Mr. Ripley, did you have any final comments you wanted to make?
I did not. Again, I think Dr. Brenner had said, you know, maybe a short presentation, and that wasn't a short presentation. But I want to take your questions and your attention, your engagement as, just again, representative of the community support that's behind this project. We talk a lot about the need to define the ability to collaborate with our city or county or industry. You have one in spades, and that's what's happening. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it's going to provide some great opportunities for our students, which is what I'm most excited about. So thank you for your support. which is what I'm most excited about. So thank you for your support and time tonight.
Well, thank you. We look forward to further updates. And we all know your guys' emails and cell phones. If we have questions, we will reach out to each and every one of you. So thank you, appreciate your time and effort. Let's move on to item 6E, which is the September 28, 10-mill special election update. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Page 36 of your electronic packet is a memo for me. As indicated in past Friday Focus, much of the work behind the scenes has been done in preparation for what we call this Communication Blitz across our community, relating to September 28th and 10-mill special election. From presentations to leadership groups to staff meetings, of which I did a Zoom staff meeting with all elementary and all high school staff today at 3:15. Got some good feedback from, from some people who emailed me right away. Those kinds of conversations are going to continue, as you can see in the outline below, which is a bit of an updated outline from what was in Friday Focus here a couple of weeks ago. But before I get into specifics of some of the nice visual work that our communications coordinator, Tracy Jensen, did on the following pages, I want to give Scott Burgie an opportunity just to update you on what the LR Center is going to look like on September 28th. So, Mr. Burgie?
Thank you, Dr. Brenner. The election is September 28th, Tuesday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Setup will be very similar, if not the exact same, as what we had for the June 22 vote. Absentee ballots are an option, and it's certainly available at this time. But, but again, we anticipate, you know, very similar setup to, to what we had in June. And, yeah, and we'll be working on getting, gathering all the judges and training and all that in advance of the vote, which is two weeks from tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Burgie. Just looking at the timeline down below, tomorrow, Dr. Lun, Chris Arnold, Scott Burgin, and I will be sitting down with the Grand Forks Editorial Board. And I'll also be speaking to the Rotary Club at noon tomorrow during their luncheon. And then you can see on Wednesday, I'll be speaking with middle school staff. And then all of MSCC staff will occur over the course of a couple of days. And then the September 23 community-wide school open houses that you were invited to by email from me. Just please note that on your calendars. We'd love it if you could attend your, your assigned school, or schools, plural. Open houses will be from 5:30 to 7:30 with tours, starting at 5:30, and then a second tour at 6:30. On the following pages, just want you to see what Tracy Jensen's put together. She's taken about 48 slides to 58 slides and tried to condense it into a two-page elevator speech. So that means you gotta go up about 40 floors to have this elevator speech. But nonetheless, we think this is all of the essential and important information. The only piece that we may add, because I got a lot of feedback from teachers today after, after my presentation, was they really liked the pie chart, Mr. Burgie. The pie chart showing the 31% taxes going to the school district compared to West Fargo, Fargo Minot, and Bismarck. They think that really tells the story in and of itself. So maybe we just have one slide that we need to share with everybody. But basically, all of this information is being, is going to be pushed out electronically. The other electronic message that we are pushing out, and it's uploaded archived on our website, I believe already, would be about 16 slides. I was trying to get that into seven minutes, and that was impossible to do. So it's about 15 minutes. Anybody who is interested in hearing our story and why 10 mills will be important on September 28th will have all the factual information. So just want you to know that work is happening in earnest, and we're trying to get as much of this out in front of people as humanly possible, both face-to-face and electronically.
Any clarifying questions for Dr. Brenner or Scott, or comments? I don't know how many school board members have two schools. Cindy, do you, are there, I know there's a fair number that have two schools. So I don't know if, I guess we're just gonna have to divide and conquer. Is that what we're gonna have to do, I suppose? So, so, go ahead.
I don't, I didn't, I don't recall that email, I apologize. So I must have missed it. So how is that working for the general public, even if they want to go to a different, you know, more than one school? I'm sorry if I missed something.
No, they'll, they'll have to pick one or two schools to go to. It won't be possible for them to attend all of the campuses. We're trying to do a blitz all in one night. And we do expect that there's gonna be a light turnout at some facilities, and maybe a heavier turnout at others.
So can you just briefly describe what communication is going out about those tours to the general public? I, I mean, I, I must be just in the clouds, because I haven't seen anything. Sorry.
I think you'll see that shortly. I don't have the factual information of when that's gonna be pushed out, if it's gonna be pushed out tomorrow or the next day. But the communication, the invitation has been created. Tracy Jensen's done that, and we just need to push that out for everybody to see.
Another question unrelated to communication. The pool, Central is listed there. Is Red River's pool also not in commission, and where does that fit in this?
The Red River Pool has not been used for competitive swimming, because it's not designed for that. But we took it offline within the last year, because it had so many leaks. So we took that offline. The, the swimming teams have been practicing up until this past late spring at Central High School, which is designed for at least competitive practice, but it's not designed really to host swimming meets. So because we've got some, some moisture and condensation issues there, and water moving through the bricks from the inside of the building to the outside, and bricks falling off, all of our swimming practices right now are at HSLAP at UND. And we know that can't be a long-term solution either, because we don't believe that UND has HSLAP in their long-term facility plans.
So my question is then, I mean, I don't know how final this document is, but you're not mentioning Red River's pool there at all. And I don't know if you can, I mean, you could, I don't know if you can include that, but...
We certainly can include that, Dr. Shaw.
Just thinking about the, I guess, equity, because Red River students aren't swimming at Red River either, and neither are Central. And, you know, full disclosure, I am a swimmer, so I see Red River and Central's lockers every morning when I go at 5:45 AM, so.
Are there questions? Mr. Burgie?
Just to follow up, Cynthia, there's a, there was a meeting, oh, about a month, month and a half ago. And there's another meeting this coming Friday with UND Park District, City School District, and Wahoo Swim Club, et cetera, to try to determine what we're gonna do as a community, as far as offering swimming facilities. So I just want to say more to come on that.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Thank you both. We'll move on, and Mike and Adam back there, I promise we'll get to you before September 14th, okay? So. Let's move on to item 6F, which is North Dakota School Board Association Opportunities for Board Development. Dr. Brenner?
Sorry, I'm a little slow with my microphone here. Page 39 in your packet just outlines what's coming up and available for all of you. On October 28th in Bismarck, the School Law Seminar will be Day One of the convention. And then Day Two would be October 29th. There's no mandatory requirement for any of you as board members to attend this year, because you're all veterans. If we would have a new board member, there would be some mandatory attendance requirements. So if you are interested, all I'd like to share with you is please contact Cindy, and she will make hotel arrangements for you, and probably sooner than later, because things fill up quickly at the Ram Codah, if you're interested in staying there.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, let's move on to item G, which is a debrief of the Valley Middle School Building and Child Nutrition Tour back in August. Dr. Brenner?
Page 40. Again, I just asked you in advance to think about some things. You didn't have a lot of time to think about your Winship tour tonight, because you just took that tour. But you've had a little bit of time to think about Valley Middle School. And not that we want to go into the weeds of planning for long-term facilities, but just was hoping to hear from, from each of you about your overall impressions of the interior, exterior. I know we weren't able to see the outside of Winship in particular tonight, and the green space that's available at both sites. So really want you to think about 21st century learning. We're almost 22 years, 22 years into this new century. And do these facilities stand up environments the way you would like to see them stood up? That's basically the question for all of you.
Why don't we start with, with just Valley, rather than going back and forth? Comments about those of you that were able to attend the Valley tour? Jackie, go ahead.
No disrespect to Valley, because I'm a Valley parent myself for many years, but it feels very institutional. And it feels very much like it should be a juvenile detention center versus a school. If you ask me, it's very plain and, and brickish. And I think everyone that was there can speak to the fact that it is exhausting to be in that building with the heat and the temperature differences from room to room. I give my, my children props all the time for making it through a Valley day in a mask, or just making it through a date at all, given the heat sometimes that's in that building. But certainly our stu-, our, you know, teachers and staff, too. I think that's probably the, the biggest takeaways for me.
Thank you. Bill? Did you have your hand, did you have your hand up?
I think Valley provides us lots of opportunity with the green space around it, that we do have area there if we, to rebuild. And if we do move forward, maybe you look forward to just rebuilding a middle school only, that that takes some of the weight off of the pushback we received in the past.
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I, I think Valley was built for a different era, and it does not, in my opinion, meet any, by, anything close to requirements that, that 21st century learning has. I mean, that's the one campus that has green space close by, because of the park. But from an interior, exterior layout, how they have to operate, it is, to me, not conducive to the most effective learning that we could provide to students. And I, I knew that before, and I guess it just greatly reinforced it when I was in there. I think anybody that, from the community, that would go in that building and see it, and especially if it happens to be really hot, but even without the hot, the heat, would see that it's not. We do great things with what we've got, but we could do even better things with a facility that's made for today's world. And that's what we need, when it comes to Valley, for, for sure.
Go ahead, Amber.
I didn't attend this specific meeting, but as someone who drives around for a large portion of the day, I frequently am on the north side when school is let out, or in the morning. And the, the parking, the, the width of the street is just not set up as such to handle pickup and drop-off and residential traffic at the same time, along with potential commercial traffic that's coming in for child nutrition. And so I've also been to Valley in the middle of the day for meetings at, at certain various times in the past couple of years. And there's very little parking for visitors or parents coming in. And so I imagine that a lot of the traffic on the streets is probably the staff as well, because there's not a lot of parking for the staff. So while Valley is in a great location in the middle of a neighborhood, there is still significant traffic and, and cars that pick up and drop off, and buses. And so I think just to, to be aware of building in, you know, how, how we coordinate traffic and accessibility, drop-offs are just crazy. So I, I also have been in Valley when it's hot, and it's just not sustainable as a good teaching and learning environment. And so I certainly would appreciate nice, cool ear to learn in.
Just so people are aware, you, you drive for purpose. You're not, you're not wandering around the community all the time. You have actual jobs. Just want to make sure people didn't think you're just wandering around, so. Chris, did you have any comments?
Mr. Chair, just to add on to everything, one of the other pieces of this is, if you look at Schrader and South, they have, if you will, wings or pods for grade levels. As they said to us at Valley, they don't have that. Better for teaming, better for a community feel at the grade level. We know that's what parents really spoke loudly about. So, again, that design does not meet the standards and expectations that we have today. So they, also the spaces for some of the, you know, we heard about Career Tech Ed and those other courses, there's not the, the proper space for the additional courses.
Jeff, any comments?
I'll have to apologize, I was out on vacation during that tour. But I agree, we have some great green space, and, and I've been in there for other events, too. And without the AEC, I think we have some, some room, room to grow.
Thank you. Cynthia?
I agree with what everyone has said. The only additional thing I think that stood out to me was just the lack of electrical outlets in rooms, considering that we are so technology-driven. That could be true at, at Winship as well. I noticed, you know, big strips, power cords with lots of things plugged in. But then, if you remember that really hot room where she said there was no, the custodian reminded us that there was no fix for that room. There's, there's no, there is just no ability to make it cool, because everything was broken, and it's not replaceable. And then my heart kind of does get troubled when we hear about a fantastic idea of a CTE, and that we could potentially have, you know, a new career and technical education program and facility, and still be working with Winship, Wilder, Valley, in, in the dark ages. So that, that's kind of a challenge for me.
Thank you. My, my only comments are revolve about the age of the building, and the ADA was not even a gleam in anybody's eyes. And, and to think about, you know, being a pediatrician, to think about a special needs child or a child in a wheelchair, things like that. And then the HVAC, which is just horrendous. And it's not unique to just Valley. There are other schools that are, but, but Valley, because of the way it was built with the half floors and stuff, I mean, it really, talk about an obstacle course. So that, that's, that was really impressed me. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I just want to take hats off to the custodial staff. You guys pass that on at both schools, because they both were in excellent shape for what they have. You know, very well-kept, and, and you can see that a lot of heart went into keeping them clean and, and keeping them up. And I think most, all of our schools are like that, so I think hats off to those.
Amber?
I was gonna mention, too, another point of just celebration. When you walk into Valley, you know that you're a Valley royal. They have, they, they do a really good job at trying to, you know, the decor, the signage. So I think just hats off to our staff, who are at those buildings, too, just to really bring life with what they're working with to some of those schools, so that it's individualizing that community for, for each of our schools.
It really does reinforce that what makes the school is not the school, it's the people in the school. But it's our job, I think, to make the building as modern as we can, to make that job easier for people. So how about Winship? Would like to comment about, Cynthia, go ahead.
So the striking thing at Winship is just the discrepancy between the size of the rooms. I mean, if you see the two rooms, the inner room and the outer room, both rooms are really too small, but there is a big difference between an inner room and an outer room. I doubt if they're able to do three-feet spacing in, in many of those spaces. So that was, besides the electrical, that, that's really the, the striking thing. And, you know, outside Winship, having, that's, I was assigned that school this year. Or no, 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 I went there as a personal visit, sorry. I'm at Century this year. There were lots of kids playing on the playground there, but it is very small. But they, they were really rocking their, I mean, it was noisy stuff. And so they were having fun, but it, it isn't the equipment and the area and the space that we'd have at other schools, and that I would have foreseen having, if we'd been able to get a new school.
Thank you. Go ahead, Doug.
I guess some of the things that stood out to me in that is the size of the classrooms and the lack of windows. Even the rooms that had windows, one of the two was in a little corner that was blocked off by cabinets or other thing else. So the lack of natural light in that building is, I think, just terrible. And the lack of space just for basic needs that take... And the lack of space just for basic needs that take place. Everything was crammed or they were shuffling here and there, depending on what specialist was there or those kinds of things. And the lack of any space for collaborative activities. I mean, lack of parking, lack of green space, you name it. It pretty well hits all the things. But again, as Bill indicated, you know, custodial staff and the administration and teachers do a wonderful job with what they've got. We just need, in today's world, need to give them a better facility to do their work in and they can even do it even better than they do it today.
Thank you. Bill? Bill, do you have any other comments? Thank you. Jeff?
I agree with both here too. I'm troubled by the lack of off-street parking for our staff to try to keep up with, well, I can park on this street on this day, the other street on the other day. What if it's a snow day and we have plows coming by? I have to shuffle my car around when I see the plow go by so they can clean the street for the residents. The windows also, just the lack of windows, horrible. And I guess that's, Wilder's one school that I would be okay with being sent to the principal's office because he really doesn't have a principal's office. I mean, it's a boardroom kind of situation where there's just a table in there. It's not really an office. But, I mean, they did great for the office area. They put the nurse there and the boardroom table and the, I forget the other one now. But they had another tiny office there too. But they're doing great things with the space. But they could almost double it and still probably need a little bit more.
Now Jeff, you're an IT guy and you don't want to comment about the power cord strips in the classroom? We all know about that. Chris?
What I was going to say has been said, so thank you.
Melissa, do you have any thoughts about Valley or Winship?
I think it's just, you know, these, our teachers do great things with what they're given, but the students and the teachers deserve more. They deserve a cool building and they deserve a space to work in. And I think too, it has come up and, you know, like Cynthia said, you're kind of torn because I know it's a completely different situation, but I have heard from teachers like, so now CTE is getting this big new building possibility and we have schools that are falling apart. And elementary schools and middle schools where kids are dying of heat and you have no windows to see outside. And so I think there is some very much, like they understand it's different and it's a different situation, yet at the same time, it's bringing a lot of frustration among some of the teachers. So.
Thank you. Amber?
I was just going to say for Winship specifically and Viking, I mean, the relocatables are nice, but they're just not as sustainable as for a classroom. I mean, the fact that people have to go outside or learn outside and potentially experience some safety issues or have to come inside the building or, you know, to go to the bathroom or just in case of severe weather, if they had to come inside. It's just an equitable piece that if our schools can't sustain the amount of individuals and we have to push them outside, I just, I don't like to see anyone learning in relocatables. So.
Just to maybe partially respond to Melissa, I think one of our jobs, and I mean collectively, all of us here, is to educate the public, but also educate the staff about funding streams and that really the career impact. I think career impact is a completely different funding stream that would utilize local donated dollars and state money, which is really Essor money, but it's state, versus what we do with our own buildings. I think part of the onus is on us to try and educate people. Because it's confusing. It's not like you and I, we do our house budget. We say, well, we'll cut the paint out of that bedroom, but we're going to put carpet in. It can't, it's not the same way. So I think that, I'm glad to hear that feedback because I think that means we need to do some education about that. So. Any further, go ahead Cynthia.
Just one. So I was assigned Century Elementary and on the open house, I went there. And then I went over to Winship that same night. And that is a very striking experience because you're in Century Elementary and that's where you are. And I'm sorry I didn't get to your classroom. Lot of space, beautiful, open areas, lot of natural light. And then you see this very, very small Winship. When you see them side by side, it's quite a contrast. The other thing I would just like to highlight is that the teaching staff at Winship is incredibly creative. Now, we were in that kindergarten room. Who provided that big comfy chair? There's a lot of teacher stuff that really changes the classroom with their different high stools, low stools, rocking kind of chairs, you know? I mean, so we have fantastic staff. And like everybody said, it's not the, it's, we just need to give them better buildings.
And I think when you were talking, I think our Facility Committee members from the community back there are shaking their heads really big. Yes, that's why we came up with what we came up with. Other final comments or questions? Dr. Lewis, did you have any thoughts at all? Dr. Brenner? Okay, thank you. Well, let's move on to superintendent's recommendations for action. A is consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the second?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Cynthia, second by Doug. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Annual compliance report, Dr. Brenner?
That's page 45 of your packet. Basically, this is an exercise that all of our building level principals have to go through. And then things are signed off by our assistant superintendents and also by HR, that we are in compliance with teacher certification qualifications, et cetera. So you can see that all principals have done their homework. Everything has been completed. And we would ask for your approval for the 2021-22 annual compliance report.
Clarifying questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Delphine?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Authorization for sale of tradings, I have Mr. Ripley, but I assume it's Mr. Bergy?
Well, it can be either of us.
Oh, there's Mr. Ripley back there. I'm sorry. He was way, way in the back. I didn't see him up in the cheap seats back there.
Since you're here and I think you were eager to present this.
Sorry, Eric. I apologize. I didn't see you back there.
That's quite all right. You've probably had enough to hear from me tonight. So I will make this very brief. Each year, it's just a formality, the school board authorizes some designees to sign on behalf of the district to sell the building trades house, which is not completed, right? So we are in the midst of building the current school year house. We anticipate finishing by the end of the school year, not pending any delays. And then probably we'll sell the house sometime next spring. The reason we do this so early is in the off chance that we have somebody that comes in and says, I want to buy now. We have authorization to be able to proceed with that transaction and not call a special board meeting. So that's the board member that's in front of you and that's really what we're here for tonight.
Comments, questions from board members? Can you read it, Bill, just so we do it the way, we want to make sure we're legal?
Make a motion, authorize the school board president and his or her designee to and business manager to sign the required closing documents for the sale of the 312744th Avenue South residential property.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a second from Jeff. Any comments or questions? Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're on to Mr. Bergy. 7D authorization of sale of West Elementary School property.
Thank you. Page 45 of the board packet. Grand Forks Public Schools.
I believe it's 51, isn't it?
Oh, mine says 40. I don't know. You know how I am with numbers.
Are you in the right month?
Just kidding. Memorandum, for whatever reason, mine's showing a different page number. Grand Forks Public Schools has completed the advertisement period for the sale of the former West Elementary School and has received and reviewed responses. North Dakota Century Code 15 dot 1 dash 09 dash 33 gives the school board powers to purchase, sell, exchange, and improve real property. An ad for the sale, RFP was established and provided Grand Forks Public Schools the ability to review and select whom they sell the former West Elementary site to. Grand Forks Public Schools had four attendees at the site visit on August 31st. At the site visit, a copy of the known asbestos containment materials, radon, fire alarm, and sprinkler reports were provided to each of the attendees. Grand Forks Public School administrative staff received and reviewed the two proposals that were submitted. The resulting score table is attached. Additionally, the ad for the sale RFP is attached. Grand Forks Public Schools administrative recommends approval of Oxford Realty Premier Homes and Builders to purchase the site of the former West Elementary School. Those items are attached. And I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go into. The, you know, the scoring sheet was attached. The committee involved the superintendent, myself, Chris Arnold, directors, director of building and grounds, and Eric, our maintenance supervisor, Eric Holm. The combined score was, in this case, a lower score was better based on the parameters of the scoring sheet. And all four ranked the Oxford Premier Builders proposal higher of the two. The document attached, again, it's got the, what we utilized as well as the proposals from both of the bidders. The Oxford Realty Premier Homes bid is for $150,000 and the details are attached. I see Mr. Op, Mr. and Brenna are both here. If you have any specific questions for them. I also see Mr. Ryan Brooks from the city in the audience. If there are any questions regarding any, anything within those proposals or how the city would approach anything related to this proposal.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here. You two look like you're just out of high school, so I must really be getting old. But thank you for both being here. Questions or comments from school board members? Mr. Brooks, can, maybe I can ask you this question. I know the desire from the school district and the school board has been, we really want single-family homes or things like that. But really, once we sell the property, that decision is left up to the developer, but also to city planning and eventually it seems city council to do that. Right now, it's zoned for, I think, R1. So what would be the process if whoever purchased this wanted to change it to a 64-unit complex or something? Just so the rest of the board understands.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. So yeah, if somebody wanted to do multifamily, anything but single family, which is permitted currently, then they would require rezoning. And typically, our process has been in the back. In the past, if you're going to do additional residential units, is to do a neighborhood meeting, meet with the neighborhood at least 300 feet around. And in some cases, we go further. In this case, we'd probably go further and at least get some impact, find out from the neighborhood what their thoughts are on that. And I think that does weigh in the decision ultimately that planning commission and city council ultimately make on whether to change the zoning.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from Adam or Mike or Ryan? Go ahead, Amber.
I have some questions for Mike and Adam. So can you talk a little bit about your experience and familiarity with the North End neighborhood and what excited you about this project? And then I see in here that there's a desire to do 10 family lots. Can you also explain if your desire is to rent out those homes or if they would be for sale for individuals to purchase? Do you want to hit the yellow button, Mike? Thanks.
Yep. For those that don't know us, I'm Mike and this is Adam. So how are we familiar with the neighborhood? I guess Adam and I, we've built properties in that neighborhood. And typically, they are built for rent. I guess it kind of goes to affordability there. So it's, for example, the cost of construction versus like what the appraised value might be for a sale. So in this market, I guess, what do you think, Adam? We don't really know because this is going to be in the future.
On the building cost side of it, it might be a thing where we could build them and sell them, but is that price going to be affordable right now with the price of construction?
And then the market determines the appraised value. So if the appraised value is less than what the cost to build, then of course, it's affordable to rent.
So what you're saying is that you don't have an answer to commit to either one at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay. So part of what I'm just hearing from public feedback is that the fear would be that we're just creating more rentals in the neighborhood and that we would have these nice homes that are being built and then they would just turn into rental units. So it kind of defeats the purpose if we're building single-family homes versus a multifamily unit anyways. And certainly, we don't have any leeway to say what goes after the sale happens. But me as an individual board member, it would certainly be my preference that we create opportunities for homeownership for single-family homes in this neighborhood.
Yeah, I guess it's just a matter of if the purchasers can afford to buy the homes. So if they cost, for instance, $350,000 to build and the comparable sales in the neighborhood are 300, you know, then it's hard to afford that house to buy.
Are you building off of a certain spec or would it, would you build to modernize but fit within sort of the price point of that neighborhood?
We're going to try our best to fit within the neighborhood and modernize, yeah. But that's why it's hard to get the comparables. And you're in the real estate business. I mean, it's, on the south end, it's hard. So I mean, you can build a house for 10 grand under the appraisal, let's just say, on the south end. You know, if you're doing everything perfectly efficient. But on the north end, it's hard to tell, especially since this project is two years in the future. We don't know what construction costs are going to be. But what we do know is we can build the houses. And at some degree, they're going to be affordable, whether it's rent or purchase. It's hard to say.
I know at current, the south end, in terms of how the land is developed, there's some special assessments that are added to the value of the property and that some of the homeowners would take on that expense. I don't know if this is you or Mr. Brooks, but would there, with the demolition of a building and then perhaps reworking some of that in terms of the infrastructure, would there be any new special developments that then would be deferred or that the homeowners would take on? And similarly, if these were for purchase, would residents be able to take advantage of a tax abatement?
I could try to answer that first question, I guess. The one thing about special assessments, we plan to pay for all the demolition and anything that's needed. So whatever prevails in that neighborhood, which is low specials, I guess that would add to affordability if it was for sale, if it was a home that we'd put for sale on the tax abatement, I guess.
Well, I was going to say the same thing. I think a lot of the infrastructure is there. So there is some areas that, Mike had called me, I think, before he put in the bid. And we just had a quick conversation that some of the area is going to be a little bit more difficult. There's going to be some challenges to get utilities, I think, on the one corner. So he's probably going to have to do that as part of his development. He'll have to supply that. So it wouldn't be special assessments. The city used to do special assessment deferrals. We don't, we haven't been doing those. That time has already lapsed, so we haven't been doing those. But new construction, we do have some tax breaks for new construction. I would think they would apply to those. I would defer to our assessment, our assessment office, but I think they'd be eligible for those with new construction.
Other questions or comments from board members? Scott, I had one quick question. Would the proceeds of this go into the general fund or the building fund or your pocket? Or where would they go?
None in my pocket. I know, I can guarantee that.
Uh, none in my pocket. I know, I can guarantee that. With the, you know, the, you know, the initial costs, I would think it would go into the, uh, the building fund. In either, either case, right now, uh, you know, the impact is, uh, with our, uh, building fund availability, et cetera. You know, from a, from a budgetary aspect, it's, it's not really gonna make a difference to us, uh, at, at the current time.
Thank you. Further questions or comments for the gentleman? Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, good to see you. I have full disclosure, he was a, he was a student before I had gray hair and hell of that. Became a grandparent, but, uh, Mike, you, you, I actually got to know you when you first started on your own, if you will. And, uh, and over the years, you've done a lot of projects in this community. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on the spot and perhaps Mr. Brooks may even come in and step in. Have you been well received and have you had any issues that would cause us to be concerned about your character and what you're providing the city?
I'd like to think no.
I just, what I'm trying to do, I think you see what I'm doing.
I'm gonna do.
I'm try, I'm trying to, I'm trying to confirm your character here.
I can speak to that as well, just as a, a real estate professional. I've worked with Mike and Adam on, on a few different interactions and transactions and they've always been very professional, um, in terms of a working relationship. So, um, I, I know that there's numbers that you have to meet and ultimately, there's a business side of things for you guys. And, um, but I also know that you understand the neighborhood and the community as well and.
Thank you, guys.
The good thing is this is a small enough town and if you didn't do stuff like that, you wouldn't be in business for very long. It's not LA, so.
Can't talk to you in seven stories.
Go ahead Cynthia.
I, I feel like I have a very naive question. So is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars like a good price for this?
Mr. Bergy, you wanna answer that?
Uh, well, uh, Dr. Shabbat, I don't know if you so noticed the, uh, you know, the other, uh, one in here was for a, a hundred and twenty-five thousand was the other proposal. Um, you know, I've seen in, um, in other communities, Bismarck has closed a couple of schools within the last ten years and, and those were, uh, basically, uh, for a, a dollar, I believe, or in effect. You know, the, the demolition costs, i- i- et cetera, um, at least in, with what, what happened in Bismarck, you know, did not see, uh, a dollar value above and beyond that. So, um, you know, I, um, you know, I feel good through the, you know, the process that we went through. And, um, and with the, um, you know, and, and when you look at ten lots, uh, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand, it's, uh, at least a quarter million, I'd say, to probably demolish it. There's, uh, remediation with some asbestos and, and some other utility costs. You know, that, that really drives up what the, you know, what that cost of the lot would be. And, and, you know, I don't wanna, obviously, I don't know your other numbers and what you've worked through, but from, from that perspective, um, you know, I, and, and comparing to what I've seen in, in some other communities with school districts that have, uh, divested of buildings, um, you know, I feel good about this.
So the administrative recommendation is to approve the Oxford Realty Premier Homes and Builders, uh, to purchase the site of the former West Elementary School. What is the board's wishes? Go ahead.
I, I just have one more question for you, Scott. We're selling a property that didn't have, that we didn't collect property taxes on. Can you talk about what would happen then when it's redeveloped and properties are put on there?
Right, so, uh, a good question. So when, uh, you know, when the building is demolished and, uh, you know, for the example here with the proposal of, of ten sites, when those are built, uh, uh, those will come on the tax rolls. There's some, uh, with, with new properties, there might be some tax abatements, uh, for, um, I don't know if it's two years or two years? I believe, yes. But, uh, but beyond that, um, you know, that would be, uh, in effect, uh, almost like a new city block, uh, of individual homes added to the tax rolls. That will, uh, generate property tax dollars for, uh, of course, the school district, but also the, the city, county, and park district as well.
To be correct, Mr. Bergy, would, would not Adam and Mike be on, on tap to have to pay taxes once they own the property? They, they, they don't have a tax exempt status, so will it not start almost right away?
Right, and, and I don't know the specifics of, you know, what, what the value would be and, and things of that nature upon demolition, but, but right there, they're not a, a government or a, or a tax exempt entity. So there would be some tax, uh, property tax consequence, uh, immediately. You're right.
It would be more than what we're currently getting.
Right.
Jeff?
I'd like to move approval of Oxford Realty Premier Home Builders to purchase a site of former West Elementary School.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Further questions, comments, thoughts? Jackie?
Um, I just wanna, uh, make a comment. I was able to attend the, the West celebration. I've, I owned a home for, gosh, close to twenty years, two blocks away from this location. So I care very dearly about that neighborhood and about that school. And it's been some sort of bittersweet transitions, um, in my home and in my neighborhood, right? So, um, I just want to thank the school district for putting on such a neat end of West celebration. I really appreciated that and that was good for me and my family enclosure and I think for the neighborhood. And thank you for, uh, proposal. That's probably, I think, probably one of the best things that we could do for that neighborhood, uh, within our ability to control so many factors. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Dr. Brenner?
Yeah, and what you didn't see in, in the packet tonight is, and we haven't had the conversation yet, but we want to work with, uh, Mike and his colleagues on, uh, salvaging some of the brick, uh, to do some symbolic things for the neighborhood. And if in the event we do have a new Valley Middle School site, we want to take some of that, some of those materials and incorporate that into a new building, much like Phoenix did with, uh, the closure of Belmont and Lincoln.
I can tell you, we, we, when the Grand Forest Clinic got torn down, that's, that's what we did. We had employees that were allowed to have a brick and stuff in it. It, from a, from a psychologic standpoint, it made a big difference for some of them because a lot of us spent a good portion of our adult lives in, in those buildings. So I think that would be a nice idea. Any further questions or comments? If not, the motion is to approve that, assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for hanging in there tonight, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Let's move on to item eight, other announcements. Dr. Brenner?
No announcements.
Dr. Lewis or Ms. Glatch, got any announcements? Melissa? Okay. Board request for future consideration. I, I have one, I think, and I think it's probably maybe already on the queue or something, but I think at some point we need a busing update on. I think we, there's a, there's a short, there's a short-term issue, but then I think there's gonna be a long-term issue. And at some point, we need to get it on a meeting or Friday focus or something at some, at some point, so. Jackie, school board norms, how did we do?
We're wonderful. Yeah.
That positive social worker in you, thank you. So appreciate that. Well, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.